Good evening and welcome to the October 10, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. And would you please join me in a moment of silence and remember the people of Israel and all those affected by this tragedy? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either their first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker should be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. I will need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on August 8, 2023, August 22, 2023, and special council meetings on September 6, 2023, and September 21, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Minutes are accepted. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We are on Agenda Item 6A, which is the North Bivard Commission on Park and Rec. And the North Bivard Commission on Park and Rec semi-annual report is included in your agenda packet as written, and we do not have a presenter here.
Thank you.
Item 6B, which is the Titusville Housing Authority. The Titusville Housing Authority's semi-annual report is included in your agenda packet. No actions requested, and there's no presenter here tonight.
And thank you again. We move rapidly now to number seven, petitions or requests from the public. This is where you just come up and don't have to put a card in. Stan, if you weren't sitting there, I might have said we must not have anybody, but I Well, Stan, we can leave that there, or you can put it up here, but we can't have it both. No, you're about to drop that thing. No, that's not a good move. Leave it back there, Stan. You can take the signs down if you want, but leave it right there for now. Or not. But we're not going to do this every time, so put it somewhere you like it. One leg's... It's looking more like a presentation. All right, start it up.
Okay, first of all, let me thank you. Thank you for choosing to serve the public. Unfortunately, this presentation about your disservice to the public, disservice to the public. Let's begin with the top one. It says sewage spray. Disservice to the public. So what we have now is, I've given you October 7 handout meeting, and also you already have October the 10th. October the 10th, when I'll give... And the October the 10th is today, and I sent to you an affidavit. The title of the affidavit is this. It's dated 2/11, no, January 22, 2021. That's over two years ago. It's called "Affidavit of a Complete Lack of Common Sense and Disregard for Public Health by Below-Named Titusville Employees and Honorable Elected Officials for Their Foolish Decision," that's what I'm talking about, "disservice," "to leave contaminated fountains turned on in Sandpoint Park ponds contaminated by sewage spill." That's the 7.2 being down sewage spill. And so, October the 7th, I gave you, sent you an, also an email, which you have as a handout to you, and it talks about the sewage spill, and it says, "Me, my vehicle, my friends and neighbors have been pissed and pooped upon by our City Manager, Mayor, City Council, and Water And you did it deliberately. And this affidavit that's filed in the public records, that's up here, ORB 8989, page 301. That's what I have right here in my hand. It's just one sheet. It's one sheet, and it says that "Your complete lack of common sense and disregard for public health and safety is extremely shocking, unbelievable, and endangers the health, safety, and welfare of the public in a public park for more than a month," where people gathered yesterday to watch the space launch. And you've never changed the policy. So the city of Titusville is the only city I know of in Florida, in the United States, in the whole world, that deliberately continues to spray people with piss and poop in public parks, women, innocent men, men, women, and children. I think it's absolutely nuts. You guys aren't idiots. You're complete idiots. It's absolute and takes no sense, makes no sense at all. And I'm talking also to Mr. Broome. How in the world you guys would let this happen? I can't believe it. But you do it. In other words, your policy hasn't changed, and you did it again. So I'm asking you to change your policy and also terminate City Manager Larissa Forcause. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
Extra time?
And Stan, we're not going to go back and forth. If you want to take some of those with you, that's fine, but that's just, just go back and put them up there. They look good.
Are you leaving there?
No, not at all. No. Put them back there. It's just, I thought you did a good job setting them up, and then I thought, gosh, he's going to move them every time? I thought... Remember one time we didn't do it because it wasn't very stable? Well, now I think you got a stable unit, except now you're going through everybody to get here. So, and that takes some time as well, and Lord knows, you get plenty of time.
What you need to do is just go to the City Manager.
No, 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 you're good. Enough. Your time's done. Come on up. See, had to wait on you. Still waiting.
Hello.
Michael Dwyer. Good to see you again.
Yeah. I just want to know what's happening with the Paula Gardens project, what's the site plan for the street access to it, and really, what's the latest with it? What's happening with it?
I can certainly ask staff, but I can tell you that, and maybe I've said it, and we've said it when it first came up, this is not something that at this time is or will come before us. It doesn't look like something that can come in front of us, but I can't, you know, Brad, do you want to give any kind of update at all? I certainly don't have that. That's not something we're really being briefed on because it's not coming to us in council.
A site plan approval letter was issued, and we are waiting on the applicant to schedule a pre-construction meeting with the staff so that we can issue a site development permit.
Brad, is the site plan, how's the access, the road access going to be? Is it going to affect going through the Merit Drive, or what's, what are they trying to do right now?
Their main entrance is off de Merit.
Not through it, though?
I'm not understanding the question through it.
It isn't going to come down and open the gate on de Merit, is it? It's going to stay away from it? It's not going to come down our street and open up that gate at the end?
Their entrance is going to be off the north stem of de Merit, which is a public road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Anybody else? All right, City Manager.
We're on to Consent Agenda Items A through F, and City Council, are there any questions of staff for Items A through F?
I see none.
City Council, are there any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull for further discussion?
I see none.
Clerk, are there any cards for Consent Agenda Items A through F?
Yes, sir. We have two individuals.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda Item 8A. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the State of Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources Grant Agreement Number 24.h.sm.100.026, and that is celebrating Titusville's African-American history. Consent Agenda Item 8B. Approve the 2024 Medicare Medical and Pharmacy Plan Options for City retirees from 1 January 2024 through 31 December 2024. Consent Agenda Item 8C. Approve the utilization of the City of Coco Contract with Nell's Hamburg Enterprises LLC for ACE flow control cross connection inspections. Consent Agenda Item 8D. Accept the FY24 Local Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG. Consent Agenda Item 8E. Approve the construction phase engineering services for Space View Park Walkway. And Consent Agenda Item 8F. Approve Resolution Number 27, 2023, approving the temporary road closure for Astronaut High School's Homecoming Parade on 12 October 2023.
That's Thursday. Thank you very much. Clerk, can you call the cards, and when you do, tell me which ones they're going to talk about?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston for Item E and Item F.
E and F. F. All right. Yeah, we are. Do you want to, why don't you call the other one first, if you would?
Yes, sir. Tony Shifalo for Item 8A.
A. Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Tony Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. As a member of the Titusville Historic Preservation Board, I am proud that we knew about, applied for, and were awarded this $50,000 grant to uncover, document, and designate our town's traditional African-American community, both residential and commercial. This granted project will do much more than serve the city documentation of our history. Through the process of actualizing the grant, the community itself will become involved as we conduct interviews with descendants, seek out photographs and other memorabilia, and show our citizens of color that Titusville does recognize and value their heritage and existence. As a resident of a part of the area formerly known as Joinerville, I am excited to learn the history of my area and the ancestry of my neighbors. As the owner of one of the 12 locally designated historic structures, I'm pleased that the Historic Preservation Board recognized the necessity of documenting the history of the entire neighborhood surrounding the two designated historic structures in this area, the Carter House being the other. As a homeowner in the area formerly known as Joinerville, I appreciate the timing of this project because the area is targeted by Neighborhood Services for the CDBG-funded projects, and in the eyes of the Titusville vision for tomorrow, as the area prime for gentrification, my hope is that the weight and significance of the to-be documented history of Joinerville and beyond will inform and control the redevelopment of this area. So I urge you to please accept this $50,000 grant for us. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Well said. Yep, very well done. Stan, next card, I guess I'm supposed to say.
Stan Johnston for Item E and F.
Much better with the sign. Good job.
Thank you. Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer, and again, I thank you for, you know, your desire to serve the public. But again, I'm saying is that, in this case, is the city of Titusville, I'm talking about a council, a city manager, and city attorney are a disservice to our, our community on...
And with that said, you do have E and F to talk about, right?
Yes, and let me say which ones are which now. And of course, I'm talking about my objection to 8E, and that has to do with Space View Park Walkway, which I've objected to before. And that, in this, this case, is that, this is right there. That's right there where the sewage spray was near, where it was happening and contamination in the city, in the river. It was denied and so forth. And this is all nonsense. This is all nonsense, and I've been recommended to go ahead and contact Federal Highway Department, NASA, and so forth, because you're spraying. What you did is, you haven't changed your policy. The city of Titusville has, has adopted our city manager's policy of spraying people with piss and poop regardless. And it's, it's, in my profession, you are not protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the people. Absolutely not. And, and you're crazy. You guys are...
And that's, that, your crazy part, that's E or F?
What?
When you say you're crazy, I'm trying to figure out how that relates here.
Okay.
E or F?
I lost some time there. But I'm talking about E, and that's the objection. So I'm talking about an objection I have to, to what you're doing. And in this case, is that I think one of the solutions would, helpful solution would be to just get rid of your city manager. I mean, he's, he's, that's, that's really, and all I want to say is, is you guys have got to be not, not idiots, but complete idiots to do what you're doing.
All right, you're running out of time, and I'll figure out what idiots has to do with it later, but you've got one minute left, and you haven't talked about F.
Well, I've already had, I've been losing time. It's not, that's not fair.
Keep going, keep going.
Well, but that's, I don't like the losing the time, losing my three minutes, because that's what happened recently. You guys removed, removed me from here for, and what you did is violate the Constitution. That's, I'm just bringing up what you, what you guys did last time. And what you should do is you should read the Constitution.
So you're still not going to talk about what you signed up for?
Well, the thing is, thing is, is I'm, my time is spending, is...
You're not talking about it.
It's continuing, and yet, and yet, I've had interruptions that use my time.
Keep going.
And so I respond to what you say, which takes away my time. So I, I'm saying is that I don't want you to spend this money because you should spend the money on something like the fraud that you have, getting rid of the fraud and getting rid of the sewage spray. $95,000. So you guys look at this too, and these are ORBN pages on this, and reading from the ORBN page, it's horrible. So if you, I, I, I'd like to ask for another minute of time.
And just to clarify on your comment about being thrown out, that what happened from up here was you weren't on topic again, and I said, sit down, and you said, no. And so that's where that went. So I never asked you to leave. I asked you to sit down. All right, with that, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Obviously, didn't read my email I sent you.
All right. No more, no more cards. All right, Member Nelson.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F, including the resolutions.
Second. Got a motion from Member Nelson, and a second from Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yeah. Consent Agenda passes. City Manager.
On to Item 9A, which is Ordinance Number 47, 2023, Commercial Conditional Use Permits. On 10 May, 2022, the City Council directed staff to evaluate existing conditional uses within the code and provide recommendations on those which were overly restricted, outdated, which should, or should be reclassified as limited permitted uses. Staff recommends certain changes in current code in order to enhance the usability of the code while protecting the property rights of commercial property owners. And the city attorney will read the ordinance for the record, and good luck.
Ordinance Number 47, 2023. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by reclassifying certain commercial uses from conditional uses to permitted or limited uses, and amending requirements for such uses by amending Section 28.54 Use Table, Section 28.103A to allow billiards to pool hall as a permitted use in the regional commercial RC zoning district, amending Section 28.112 to allow convenience store without retail gasoline sales as a limited use in tourist T zoning district, and amending conditions in the tourist T, community commercial, regional commercial RC, downtown mixed-use uptown DMUU, midtown DMUM, and civic waterfront C zoning districts, amending Section 28.123 to allow fitness center as a permitted use and hospital medical HM, and as a limited use in neighborhood commercial NC and office professional OP zoning districts, amending Section 28.132A to allow hotel motel as a permitted use in downtown mixed-use civic waterfront zoning district DMUC, amending Section 28.28.147A to allow movie theater as a permitted use in regional commercial RC and urban village UV zoning districts, amending Section 28.157A to allow pet grooming services as a permitted use in downtown mixed-use uptown DMUU zoning district, amending Section 28.167A to allow restaurants, caterers, as a permitted use in downtown mixed-use civic waterfront DMUC zoning district, amending Section 28.168 to allow retail gasoline sales as a limited use in tourist T, downtown mixed-use midtown DMUM, and downtown mixed-use civic waterfront DMUC zoning districts, amending Section 28.176A to allow transient accommodations as a permitted use in tourist Ts zoning district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
On 20 September, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented. Motion passed 7-0. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this public hearing.
Vice Mayor.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay. Staff, you have anything to present?
If you have any questions.
Okay, I see no questions. Call cards?
One card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, you have my business card. It indicates that I'm a professional engineer, and I'm employed to safeguard and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And I'm concerned that what I, I put in a number of issues regarding the operation of the Community Development Department, and as you know, you should know, is I have a lot of problems with, with what's going on. So I'm hopeful that they have done a good job on this particular item, and I have questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve Ordinance Number 47, 2023, Commercial Conditional Use Permit.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City Manager.
On to 9B, which is Ordinance Number 48, 2023, Florida Live Local Act Ordinance and Resolution Number 25, 2023. At the 22 August, 2023, regular meeting, the City Council approved staff's definitions, policies, and procedures to help, help implement Chapter 202319 Laws of Florida. The draft ordinance adopts definitions and development standards for projects that qualify under the Live Local Act. The resolution proposes a checklist to help certify live local qualifying projects. At the 4 October, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval of the ordinance and resolution with the request for the commission to continue to discuss possible future recommendations. The ordinance is based on input from the City Council meeting that was on 26 September, 2023, and the city attorney will read Ordinance Number 48, 2023 for the record.
Ordinance Number 48, 2023. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 29, Special Districts and Overlays, Article 8, Special Land Use Standards, to establish standards and procedures for development of affordable housing projects in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use districts pursuant to Section 166.04151 Florida statutes as created by Chapter 202317 Laws of Florida, Live Local Act of 2023, by creating Division 4 Affordable Housing to include Sections 29.144 Purpose, 29.145 Definitions, 29.146 Development Standards, and 29.147 Expedited Review Process, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, sunset provisions, and incorporation into the code. Staff has also presented Resolution 25, 2023, a resolution of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting policies, procedures, and an administrative review fee to implement the Florida Live Local Act, Section 166.04151 Florida statutes relating to affordable housing and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Parrish is here to provide you information and answer questions that you may have on this 48, Number 2023.
There were a few changes from your last time.
You want to go ahead and give a little talk, yeah?
So if you go to page 295 of your packet, from your last meeting, you had a few suggestions and questions and comments. We've tried to address those, and we've included that, and you'll see that in the shaded language on that packet, page number 295, and that is page two of the proposed ordinance. So for example, the definition for mixed use has been, has changed a little bit. We've included language in there related to, including affordable housing and use as permitted and limited under, into, based on the underlying zoning. Initially, it referred to specific zoning districts. It also says that at a minimum 65% of the total square footage of the mixed-use development floor area ratio, if you're not familiar with what that is, that's basically the square feet of all building, including floors. Must be residential, but not more than 80% shall be residential. And we also, it also states here, at a minimum, 20% of the total square footage of the floor area ratio of the development must be non-residential. So if you remember, we are required to incorporate a, some kind of non-residential use because of the calculation that we determined that we are underneath the total square feet or total air creature ratio of the city that is industrial and commercial is underneath that 20% threshold, and that's something that's stated in the... is underneath that twenty percent threshold, and that's something that's stated in the statute. And so therefore, a live local qualifying project in the City of Tidesville is going to have to include some kind of non-residential or mixed-use component. So this definition and some, the other criteria in this ordinance tries to address that. We've also included on that same page, uh, definition of non-residential. And we stated here, shall be identified as those uses in chapter twenty-eight, article four, use table, section twenty-eight dash fifty-four, use table, identified as recreation, excluding private parks, commercial, and industrial. What that means is, we have an existing use table. You saw on the previous agenda item, there's a matrix, zoning matrix. And it has on the top row, a list of all the zoning districts, and then it lists all the permitted uses. And it tells you whether it's a, an L or P, meaning whether it's permitted or permitted with conditions as a use underneath a particular zoning district. What this language here is referring to that table that currently exists in our code to determine what is an existing non-residential or mixed-use component. So for example, commercially zoned piece of property or an industrially zoned piece of property that's going to have, uh, a mixed, a live, qualifying live local project on it, and it has to include a mixed-use component, could look at that particular zoning district to see what uses are permitted and use those as that non-residential component. Specifically only those that are permitted or permitted with limitations. If it's listed as something that requires a public hearing, it would not qualify. Another thing that we've changed here on page two ninety-five of your packet, on the bottom there, under paragraph C, commercial industrial development, so paragraph two, uh, we've included a, a performance standard, interior buffer between industrial and residential uses shall be at least thirty feet. This is new, we're suggesting here, based on, um, a change from what you saw previously. The reason is, if a live local qualifying project is on an industrially zoned piece of property, they would be allowed to include some kind of non-residential opponent, which is industrial, on that property. So the question is, how do we make sure that that's compatible? So we decided to propose a performance standard, and in this case, a buffer of some sort. And we came up with a thirty feet based on what the code says. Right now, residential development is required to have a twenty-foot buffer adjacent to industrial. And industrial developments are supposed to have a ten-foot buffer adjacent to residential. So we combined the two and proposed a thirty feet here in this case. On the next page, page two ninety-six of your packet, which is page four of the ordinance, on the paragraph I, open space, we've changed the, the language here, we've added, uh, there was a question about, we were suggesting that there, we utilize the, uh, twenty, require a twenty-five percent open space requirement with a mixed-use development. Uh, we believe, just to reiterate what I said before, we took that from the urban village zoning district. There are many open space requirements and tools inside our code, depending on what type of development is being proposed. Based on the urban village standard, we thought that that was the most appropriate to utilize. It is a urban mixed-use zoning district with an open space requirement that is specific to commercial and industrial, commercial quarters. Um, so for example, Titus Landing or the property, the Searstown Mall, which is being redeveloped, and there's also another property south of the city that is, also has that zoning. It has very specific criteria and language in there about how do you incorporate and make a residential development compatible with non-residential uses? And then also include some kind of recreational component to serve the residential uses. So we decided that if a live local qualifying project is going to be on an industrially zoned piece of property or commercially zoned piece of property, or even mixed use, that it would utilize the open space requirement that we see in the urban village zoning district. When we brought that up to you last time, you, uh, I explained to you that the urban village zoning district open space requirements does not necessarily mean that all open space means pervious, that the rain can percolate through that ground, that it can include pavement, it can include civic areas, it includes courtyards, just like you remember seeing on the master plan for the, uh, Searstown Mall redevelopment plan that was brought before you. You had asked for, uh, more pervious open space, so we included this last, uh, sentence here in that paragraph. And it states, "A minimum of the total open space shall include at least fifty percent pervious area dedicated to active or passive recreation." Further down on paragraph K, on that same page, two ninety-six of your packet, uh, this paragraph was amended also. It now states, "The city must consider reduced parking requirements for development if the development is located within one-half mile," which is consistent with the statute, "of a major transit stop and is accessible from the development via a contiguous, a tin, continuous, excuse me, ADA compliant pedestrian facility." That allows from, for some flexibility based on what we receive as a site plan. But basically what it means is they can automatically ask to qualify or ask to reduce their parking requirements if they can, uh, demonstrate uh, a pedestrian pathway or facility of some sort to a, a transit facility. The ordinance ends on page two ninety-seven of your packet, we did not make any additional changes. Uh, does include an expedited review, and that is basically, we put a project on top of the list of whoever's reviewing it. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this ordinance. I do want to make one, one, uh, recommendation. Uh, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, there was a lot of discussion about whether this is ready to go forward. Um, and I certainly understand what their concerns were. Uh, the staff, uh, had already come to you with a request for guide or acceptance of some strategies that we wanted to use, and we've gotten that from you. So if I don't have this ordinance adopted, I still have those guidance that I've got from you that I can still utilize, maybe negotiate or work with a developer. Just remember, these projects, when they qualify for a live local under the law, they do not come before a public hearing. What would be more helpful for us is to have even better guidance, and we believe we've done this with this ordinance before you. Uh, we believe, we strongly recommend approving this ordinance, and if there's, uh, the P and Z, uh, went along with that, five to two, uh, there were two members that did, still objected to going forward with this ordinance. Uh, the five members that approve it, uh, approved the ordinance, uh, they suggested, they asked council to allow them to continue discussion. And so I thought that was a reasonable request, that we will continue to bring this ordinance back to them to see if there's any additional refinements that they would recommend back to you in a subsequent ordinance. So that is my recommendation to you this evening.
I have, and I kind of expressed in the last, uh, meeting, I have some concerns about, are we, are we rushing this? When, uh, and I said, right from here, when this, you know, the state brought this down, and then we threw all kinds of things at you, and I looked at you and I kind of said, you're going to have all this done in two weeks? And, uh, well, not even two weeks, actually, you had to have it done quicker than that. Um, P and Z vote five to two, that was one of my questions, I, I, I knew it was not unanimous. Um, how many cities in our county, and I kind of have an idea already, but I'm kind of, you know, making the point. But do any of the cities in our county have anything in ordinance yet on the, on the Florida Live Local Act?
The City of Melbourne approved an ordinance related to the Live Local Act. That's the only one I know of that has actually, uh, adopted an ordinance. I know there are others that are working on it.
Okay, I, um, I won't be real specific, and they, the person who I spoke with doesn't really want to get involved with it, but I spoke to another city manager, and, um, they're not really even, you know, close to passing, they have moved more forward than, uh, than she had said at first, or he had said. Um, I have some concerns, I just want to make sure, I guess my biggest, biggest statement is, is it ready? Is it ready? Um, you know, uh, I don't believe that, you know, if Melbourne had one, I, I didn't know they did. To be honest with you, I heard they were working on one, I didn't know they passed it. So they passed a complete ordinance like, you know, this?
They passed an ordinance right before the law became effective, and then they are also working on changes even today.
All right, so it's fluid. Would you call this fluid when we get done tonight, if we were to pass it?
I would say having this ordinance in effect would, would help the staff.
All right, and I get that, I do, I'm, I'm not trying to, to be a reticent person here, but, um, I guess, I can't help it, I'll go back to my, my coaching, the biggest fear I always had, the biggest fear I had was being out-prepared by my opponent. I don't know if we've done everything we need to do, um, and it just seems rushed. And, and that being said, that concerns me, but that, that, I'm not sitting in your seat. You know better than I do if this is ready. You know better than I do if you're ready to go into the game and not get beat. I have some concerns, uh, I, obviously, I feel like the state tossed something to us that, you know, was half-cooked and we had to do the other side, and that makes it difficult for staff. So I, I definitely look forward to hearing what, uh, the cards will say, and I'm assuming we have a few cards. Uh, what do we have here, Member Nelson?
I tend to agree with the mayor that we are rushing this, and I understand the reason that we are rushing.
I do too.
Because there are people that want, have projects that want to go ahead. Um, my question, Brad, is the twenty-five percent that came from the urban village, uh, standards, right?
Correct.
And so that would allow, um, a park, a courtyard, anything like that, this impervious surface, correct?
Yes, the urban village zoning district does, uh, allow for plazas, civic areas.
So if somebody were to develop a, a parcel of land with a plaza on it, that would count toward that twenty-five percent?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Yeah.
And that would also qualify as a mixed use?
It's possible, so the, uh, the list of uses that are in those particular zoning districts do allow park as a permitted use. So if an applicant decided to propose a park, a public park, as one of that non-residential component for that mixed-use development, they could do that.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that was it, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, a couple of things, um, is, um, when you were putting these things together, who took, who was given the greatest consideration? The developer or the, uh, people who are economically disadvantaged?
The staff looked at this, well, the law, the, the legislature made that decision as to economic disadvantage, as to where they can be located.
I, that's, that's what I'm very much aware of.
Yeah.
Is that the, the greatest consideration was supposed to be on the economically disadvantaged side. In these percentages that I see, I don't think that that happened. I don't think that that happened. It's the percentages that I don't understand. It's because if the percentage was correct, and the, the major thought of it was on the economically disadvantaged, uh, it would, it, the, the percentage would be different because you got some thing that says, that, that I'm lost in, and I know that, and I take it says, once a less than twenty percent, and then it says, some parts it says a minimum and twenty percent. It is kind of confusing for, for me to understand, and I'm pretty, I was once a pretty good engineer. Uh, and, uh, but that's what I'm saying, I don't know if we have achieved the goals of the state. The goals of the state was to do our best to make sure that since we're going to change something, we're going to change it for the greater advantage of those that we're changing it for. That's, that, that's what I don't see here. Uh, I understand that we need to put something together to move it, uh, to, to get it done so that we have somebody. I think this is a good starting point.
For us here?
But I, I think that we need to go back now and say, okay, our prob, our number one priority is those who are economically disadvantaged. And let's do the best that we can and give the investor as many perks, if you will, that will draw them to the table. That's my thought on it, what, my first thought, and if you come back to me again, I'll probably have another one.
Brad, if we had a developer who wanted to do something, and there's a state legislative, uh, bill out there, live local, can they still work based on that, or we have to do our side and have to come up with an ordinance?
Without an ordinance or without guidelines, all we will have is the law to go by. The problem with that is I don't know how to apply our code to that law. And so, like I, uh, told you before, uh, there are a lot of open-ended questions. And yet, the law says we have to expedite the review. And I'm concerned that if we don't have clarity as to how to apply that law in our own context, and every city's going to have to come up with some kind of solution to this, I would say, in some way, whether it's an ordinance or a mod or a policy guide. Uh, without that, it's very difficult to make determinations. And then you have, when, when there's no certainty that a developer can rely on, then there's a lot of going to, uh, appealing interpretations that I don't know if I can really base any of them on it yet, because I don't have the guidance on how to apply this law to our code. So I think I, we would be in a much more difficult position in trying to allow a live local qualifying project without an ordinance. And that's why we came to you with this. We believe that the ordinance was drafted to allow us that guidance, and I think we're at that point with what we've got. There certainly could always be room for improvement, and that's true of any ordinance. The disadvantage we have is that I can't come to you to bring this project in any form as a public hearing to get any question answered. It's up to staff to figure this out.
Um, Member Cole?
Well, I understand that we really need to get this through, because I understand you can't really do anything unless you have an ordinance. How difficult would it be for us if we decided that we needed to change? And, I mean, what would we have to do to change it? If we wanted to change, add, delete? Because I look at it as a living, breathing document, because we, you know, this thing hasn't been implemented yet. And as you said, Melbourne may have it, and they may have some projects that come before them and find out that there are some problems. So how difficult would it be to?
I think you can go through some of the paragraphs and ask me whether this is something that could be modified or whether you accept. I, sounds like there's some concern about open space. If you don't agree with that minimum requirement of requiring a minimum of open space. Like I said to you before, when we first told you we were going to bring this ordinance to you, we wanted to give you what we thought was in there, and then as it's advertised, you have the ability to eliminate things out of it that you don't agree with. For example, if you don't agree with the open space requirement, that paragraph can be eliminated by you and still be adopted tonight, or it can be modified by you in some way. But that's true of every other paragraph in here. So I think it could be modified, uh, tonight, as long as, uh, it's, um, primarily taking something out. That would probably be the easiest route.
You're good. Um, Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, and, and, um, I, I understand what that is all about, we need to have something. But I would say that if, if we, before we go forward, let's go for the gusto first for the economically disadvantaged, let's get them as much as, as we possibly can. And then if we begin to, uh, get someone that's interested, then we can negotiate down. But if we go in on the low ball of the porch, we can't, it's going to be harder to go up with everything. So in our percentages, I would like them, my personal opinion, to like the percentages to favor the economically disadvantaged at all costs.
Member Nelson?
I agree with you, Joe, I don't think this favors the economically disadvantaged.
I do not.
I, and I'm not sure that was the intent. But Brad, um, do we have anybody that is trying to develop in the industrial areas? I mean, that concerns me the most.
Sure, I've received several inquiries that are primarily on commercially zoned piece of properties, such as regional commercial, hospital medical, uh, community commercial. Uh, one very serious, another one I think is probably, uh, they've had several inquiries with us. So I don't think, um, I think there's, you know, property owners and developers are seeing an, an opportunity here with the law.
Anybody else from council? Uh, call cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
This is not clause or judicial, this is a legislative matter.
Stan Johnston, I'm a little bit surprised by what's going on here, because, uh, I was at the P and Z meeting, and first of all, they had a discussion for about fifty minutes before they had, uh, opened it up for people to speak. And then they had another, I don't know, fifteen minutes or something like that. But there were some concerns that were said that, um, not in the, um, agenda packet. And that is, for example, that there's two people that-
And that is, for example, that there's two people that oppose it. And one of them is Chairman Rich, Joe Richardson, and the other one was Megan. Uh, and I'm, I'm very concerned about what's going on, because one of the main things it says is that what this legislation is going to do is going to take away the city's rights for development. One of the things is, it sounds like you're going to have unlimited height. I don't think they could build the Empire State Building, because we don't have the fire department to handle that. But we have unlimited height. I don't know if you ever heard that. They had unlimited height, and they were talking about a possibility of, see, R3 right now, they believe the density is 12 units per acre. Go up to 30 units per acre. At least 30 units per acre. Infill in the city of Tidesville. I think you're nuts. I don't, I, I just think this thing is nuts. And uh, as far as uh, the affordable housing, I think that the federal, the federal government is the one who, uh, who, who caused this, this problem specifically regarding like credit default swaps and, and uh, subprime mortgages and uh, unregulation of the banks, uh, bank leverage is just out of, out of, out of control, and just a number of things. And so this, this affordable housing has got to do with the federal government. And here we are, it's just a local government. And they're asking us to give away, it appears to me, this, this legislation says, give away your rights. The city gives away their rights to regulate this. And it's, nothing of that has been mentioned here. By, uh, and he said that we recommend. Well, that's not everybody in P and Z. And actually, what they're saying was, you know, we got, they're going to, the, the, what I heard was that, that they were going to go ahead and pass it and fix it later. That's, that's what I, that's what I understood. Pass it now, fix it later. Good luck. Good luck. I just don't think this is what the people of Tidesville want. I don't think they want the high density. Certainly, there's, there's some developers that want unlimited height and unlimited density. Of course, they'll want that. Who doesn't? I mean, it's developing, but, but the, it's not good for our quality of development, quality of life. So, uh, any questions?
Well said.
Thank you.
Good job. Um, I will say this, uh, you know, it's going to take away our, our, our rights, our, our local home rule. This, when we came, when it first came down, we knew that. And ultimately, if we have a way that we can ordinate some controls, I get that, that's great. But we're not going to be able to just say to them, we're not doing this. You know, so they're gonna, they're gonna hit us in the home rule belly pretty quick anyway. So I, I appreciate what you're saying. We just don't have control when the state comes down and says this is what you're going to do.
Okay, and you're a good football coach, one of the best.
Thank you, Stan. Uh, any, any other cards?
Yes, sir. Cole Oliver?
I was kind of hoping for a few cards. I really was.
Good evening. Cole Oliver, 1901 South Harbor City Boulevard, Melbourne, Florida. Um, first, I'd like to commiserate with you all. You've been put in a tough position by the mandate that's come down from the state. I think you, you know, said it correct. The state passed the law. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to your staff. I think they've done a good job trying to wrestle with this and provide the community with some guidance on how this is going to operate. One point I would like to ask for some clarity from this body should you guys move forward tonight is in the mixed use residential development definition. As it stands now, uh, we have the floor area ratio as beating the controlling item and shall not, shall be between 65 and 80% on the floor area ratio. And then it bleeds down to, meaning you have to have at least 20% of the floor area ratio being non-residential. But my concern or the, where I'm requesting some clarity and I have a quick proposal would be is how that floor area ratio is calculated, where in the non-residential uses, you have such uses such as public parks or recreation areas, et cetera, that don't have your typical floor area ratio, because they only have floors sometimes. So if you have, if you put a series of tennis courts out there, you know, how, how does that count in a floor area ratio? And though, so my suggestion should, you know, you all pick it up tonight would be to strike the uh, not more than 80% should be residential, but add a clause in the non-residential portion that says either um, 20% of the floor area ratio or 20% of the total acreage of the project, which would preserve 20% of that project for either its commercial or industrial underlying uses and are the other uses that are allowed within your mixed zoning districts. And I think that provides some clarity to at least, you know, my side of the table. But also, I think it makes it more effective where those projects can come forward in an economic manner that can allow some of them to be built. For example, if you went on floor area ratio alone and you had a hundred thousand square foot project, you're also now saying, well, you have to have a 25,000 square foot commercial building with the associated parking and everything else on the same land, which quickly becomes unwieldy and increases the density and the traffic problems, et cetera. So I was just trying to provide an alternative solution to, I think, try to get to the same means by which you can have some commercial and/or industrial uses, depending on the underlying zoning, but not be totally tied to the floor area ratio. That's just my suggestion tonight. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. I think clarity is a word you use that, that I'm looking for. Um, next card?
Ron Lieberman?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ron Lieberman. Um, I am on the board of the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. The Florida Housing Finance Corporation is the, going to be the one who's going to help monitor and train local municipalities along with the Department of Commerce. There's a lot of municipalities in the state that have issues, just like you do. And what I'm doing is offering you uh, someone that you could call or any, any one of the council members or the staff, if you have any questions. We at Florida Housing uh, have, have issues as well. We're trying to figure all this out. It's tough, but we'll work it out somehow. So I just want to offer you that opportunity.
Thank you for the positive offer. Appreciate that. Next card?
Katie Delaney?
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Um, so.
Name and address for record.
My name is Katie Delaney, and um, I'm, my address is 5105 Cabbage Palm Street, Cocoa, Florida. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the Live Local Act and the ordinance with that. I want to start, start off by saying this is a bad bill. It's just, it's bad. Um, it gives developers the right to uh, build on wetlands and industrial land. And um, it's going to destroy the insurance industry more than it already is. Because what happens when they build on our, our wetlands floods everyone out. And then the, all the remaining insurance companies, they go under. Well, then nobody can have mortgages and all the residents are out of luck. Not only that, but it hits our dollar, because we talk about the economic, um, you know, the people that are struggling. And of course, we want to make sure that everyone has the American dream, everyone has the opportunity to own a home. But what this is going to do, it's going to not only destroy the lower economic, but it's also going to destroy the middle class. Because the tax cuts that, that these developers are getting, they're not having to pay the property taxes. 75% to 100% of the property taxes are not going to be paid. And so who is that going to fall on? That's us. And we're going to be priced out of our houses with taxes. It's that you will own nothing and be happy. And I will not be happy.
Well said.
Let's see. I'm here to ask you to be a leader, to, our, our government was never meant to be top, from the top down. It was always meant to be the people. The people have the strongest voice. And that comes from the bottom up. There's more of us than there are of them, and we have that power. And we have elected people like you, and for me, people like the county commissioners, to be our strong voice to the state to say, uh-uh, you work for us. You need to do what we say, because this is our government. So I'm encouraging you all, I mean, this, you guys are a part of a city, so you're part of League of Cities. Use that power. Use that power and protect the people. Protect our interests, because that's what we elected you to do. So please, I'm asking you to do this, because it's going to be better for everyone. And I have, the, the thing that, that cities and counties need to do is they need to get rid of the restrictions on the types of homes that are allowed to be built, because that's the true problem.
Go ahead, finish.
The, the true problem is, is that they were, a lot of cities and counties require, you know, pretty substantial homes with all the bells and whistles. Not everybody requires that type of home. What about the elderly? They don't need a 3,000 square foot house. You know, they could probably do with a 800 square foot house or a thousand square foot house and, and live, you know, a great life. So, thank you.
Well said. Thank you. A lot of what you said there at the beginning is, I think most of us, I know I was one saying those same things when I first heard about this bill, I think it was July. And I'm like, wow, I mean, and, and as far as being able to, you know, stand up for, you know, I have contacted, I'm sure you guys have, several people up in Tallahassee. But in the end, you know, they make the laws, they have the funding, and we're just trying to, through ordinance, not, not have it take away every right, some of the ones you just talked about, where, where, where developers are going to be able to build if they are considered to be uh, low income um, housing. And uh, it takes, as we have said, and I'm still trying to learn more about it, which is I'm still not quite sure we're ready to throw this down the alley yet. But um, we don't have the say we used to have once this comes in. This is kind of like a lane over here that we don't get anything to do with, and then we can do the other stuff. And I'm not sure when the other stuff's going to go away either.
If I could give you just one example, and I'll make it quick.
Sure.
I'm just a mom.
Not just.
Okay.
Not just.
I'm just a mom and um, I uh, was going through some pretty serious stuff in the school district. And um, dealing with some horrible things going on with our kids during COVID. And uh, through that, I learned that school board members are not able to be recalled. Well, this little mom from Brevard County went and lobbied her legislature and our, changed our county charter to now, in our county charter, we're able to recall school mem, school board members. And I brought it forward to the state, and now we're able to recall school board members at the state level. So we have that power. We do.
And that's where the power would be, and like I said, we've already, I, and I can't speak for them, but I'm assuming, and over the summer when this came down, I'm like, what are y'all doing? I swear to gosh, they don't really even try to tell you, you know, this is what we want, this is we, and I agree, we have a housing issue. We have an affordable housing issue. Don't let me stand up here and say we don't. I just don't know that taking, um, I don't know, I think it's their effort to amend, to fix that. I don't want to take away that. But as you just said, and I just said, uh, they're taking away home rule.
Yep, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I say?
Uh, member Nelson, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This was not the, this was not the way to, for me, to solve affordable housing.
Well, I, on the positive side for them, they clearly were making an effort to throw some money at a situation and, and do some, some work on, on people. We got a lot of homeless, we got a lot of people can't afford houses. I get that. I just was astonished. It's like, and you guys at the city, you have nothing to say about it. So, uh, next card, please?
Joe Richardson?
Can you use the chair?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I might need a couple extra minutes. My name is Joe Richardson. I live at 1005 Knox McCray. It didn't disappear that we passed it. We passed it on a vote of five to two. And I'm just speaking for me, not the entire Planning and Zoning Commission. Comments were made that, like, when some bill is passed Congress, you got to pass it before you can read it.
Yeah.
The more we studied, and we attended three hours, three hours of video conferencing with uh, cities all over Florida. Mainly Pinellas County and Orange County, and they had no answer to it either. So if something has been said that planning and zoning didn't know what they were talking about, didn't know what was in the bill, we know what's in the bill probably better than half the legislature.
Yeah, I would say.
The more we discussed it, the more questions came up. And uh, two members admitted they were lobbied by a developer. You know, I agree with, oh, I'm afraid to say this, but I agreed with everything Stan Johnson said.
Absolutely. That's why I said good words. He was right on target. Hey!
This ordinance is not ready for prime time. We need to study it, and it may take two weeks, it may take a month, it may take longer. But you should not pass an ordinance because the state says you should. Certainly, certain, uh, when I was talking to member Nelson, there's also some pressure from some of the lobbyists to do, for Tidesville to do it first. And cities like Doral, in response to it, they've declared a six-month moratorium on growth. Orange County won't allow it to be used in any PD zone. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. It's like the vice mayor said. If you really study this ordinance, it's going to help the upper tier of the people that need affordable housing. It's not going to help the bottom half that really need it. Because the apartments they're going to develop, develop in some of the houses are going to be still out of reach for most people. We got to do something with the housing situation, but this is no way to do it.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I would just say so far from the people I've heard talk, including me starting, I have some, some concerns and questions about going too fast, so I don't think there's anything new being said down there that uh, my whole thing was, you know, I don't want to be out prepared. I'm not sure we're prepared. I'm, I'm not sure it's ready. So we'll leave it at that for right now. Next card?
Megan Moskowska?
That's the other no vote.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Um, I stand before you this evening with a humble request to table this proposed ordinance for a duration of two weeks. Allow me to clarify that my intention is not to obstruct development of affordable housing. Rather, I present two critical reasons for this request. First, I question whether city council and planning and zoning board fully comprehend the far-reaching consequences of this proposed ordinance outside the guidelines provided by the Live Local Act. As a member of the P and Z, I'm asking for more time to examine this ordinance. We were given the agenda on Saturday afternoon and expected to make a decision on Wednesday. I spent hours poring over the agenda and reading as much as I could about what other cities were doing. And I still feel like I don't have enough information to make an informed decision. That is why I also made a motion to table this at the P and Z meeting. It deeply concerns me to note in your agenda packet, as prepared by the staff, the absence of any mention that Chairman Richardson and I opposed the motion to pass this ordinance. I asked the P and Z to refrain from endorsing something they did not fully grasp. Regrettably, they were told if they didn't pass it, developers were waiting and we might not like what we saw. I call that fear mongering. True affordable housing, housing issues do not pop up overnight. True affordable housing initiatives take years of planning. In the wrong hands, the Live Local Act could serve as a boon to developers who increasingly seek to influence political decisions when their financial influence, uh, influence alone proves insufficient. I urge you to consider, who is, who is petitioning you to approve this ordinance? Is this truly good for the residents of Tidesville? It might possibly be. However, please consider tabling this motion so that we have time to answer these questions. The staff has asked for parameters to navigate the Live Local Act. Should we not ask dedicated individuals in our community who are already active in affordable housing initiatives? Could they not help us set parameters that would allow? Could they not help us set parameters that would allow developers and the city to work together? Contrary to Mr. Parrish's sense of urgency, it's worth noting, as he mentioned, no other city in Brevard except possibly Melbourne has rushed to pass such an ordinance. If there's one lesson I've learned, it's that when pressure mounts for swift decision-making, it often signifies the need to pause and reflect. Mayor, I think you said the same thing. We've witnessed this dynamic play out in Congress and we have seen similar situations unfold in California. I fear that if we do not excuse, exercise caution and take a step back, our fate may mirror that of California's or perhaps even worse. In closing, I leave you with this quote, and I hope it resonates with you. The great leaders are not the strongest, they're the ones who are honest about their weakness. The great leaders are not the smartest, they're the ones who admit how much they don't know. And the great leaders can't do everything, they're the ones who look to others to help them. Our community entrusts you with their representation. And my request, my request is straightforward. Please table this motion to allow P and Z and council members, including Members Stokel, the time to conduct our due diligence and gain a comprehensive understanding of what we are about to endorse. Thank you.
Thank you. Well spoken. Yeah, and again, I, I'm listening to your, your words. I'm like, I think those are the things I was saying. How about that? Well, and some of the things are the same questions and, and maybe I'm not important enough, but no one's calling me to ask me to do any of this.
Haven't called me either. That's a, that's a great sign, actually.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to make it real clear here because Brad, you're sitting there and you've worked real hard on this and all that other stuff. And I'm not saying we're not, you know, trying to be with you and push you, but I think even today, I'm hearing, what about this, what about that? And one of the questions I had, you know, what could you, what would you do or what could you do if you had more time? I just feel like that we, you know, we, I said it even last week before we came back. The last thing I said was, you know, you got a lot, you're going to be ready in two weeks. I, I was concerned about that. But that being said, Member Cole, you want to say something?
Well, I did. I just wanted to find out if in fact we did table this and what, what would it do to, to the staff if we didn't have the ordinance? And, you know, I, I, I feel just like everybody else on council feels that it's a comprehensive plan and it's, it's a lot of reading. And I'm just wondering if we've included everything, but I don't know if we wait two weeks or a month, if we're still going to have everything and then to satisfy the kinds of things. But I think that maybe if we got comments from members of council and members of P and Z, and look at those comments.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
What, what would it do if you didn't have this ordinance?
I'm glad you asked.
Well, you told me to ask that question.
Well, just to clarify, because I just asked that question about 10 minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
And basically this gives them guidance. If they're trying to put something together, it gives them guidance and I understand that. I will say, and again, just like when I am coaching, my biggest fear is not being prepared. It's the same thing with City Council. I want to be prepared. And I probably spent more time on this one and called more people, talked to three different city managers and, and in the past have talked to a couple of state legislators. And I still don't think I understand what the whole thing's all about. You know, and I hear some, and that's why I want to hear some cards. I want to hear what other people are hearing or seeing in the back. You know, you had some concerns that need to be emphasized as well. And that was my first concern back in July. Oh, well, here we go. You know, you guys do it and let us know how it goes. So I'll leave it at that right now, but I think that I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of good stuff out there. Another card?
The last card is Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street in the heart of
West Titusville.
West Titusville. This bill scares me to death. I have a lot of questions, but first I just want to say, yeah, it's really good for affordable housing for the economically depressed peoples. We're going to take them and put them out in some commercial or industrial area out there. Great. We'll have a food desert, grocery stores won't be there. But the other place they can put it is the mixed use in my little Tropic Street in West Titusville is one of those. So I'm scared. And I don't see that, once you pass an ordinance, it's easy, it's not easy to change it. And so I had a, I have got a lot of questions. Does it give us any wiggle room later? Because I'm really concerned about the maximum height not being restricted to to whatever the currently allowed height of a commercial or residential development within one mile of the project. And you guys, just in my history here, allowed a 10-story project to go up over here across the street from the marina, right in the, it's going to shadow our little historic downtown block. Residential density, I'm worried about that. I, I realize it's going to be a certain 30 dwelling acres, 30 dwelling units per acre. There's a lot of properties that are empty due to urban revitalization or whatever in West Titusville that must approximate an acre. I myself have almost an acre. It's a few feet short. But I don't want somebody to come in and build a big building. Now, Brad has assured me that there will still be setbacks. And the higher you go, the further back you have to be, but there's some pretty deep properties there. And there can be some pretty tall structures put. What, what are we going to do in this ordinance to protect residential neighborhoods that happen to be mixed use? I'm scared for West Titusville. I'm scared. I don't want to have lots of big, tall buildings in a, essentially a single, single-family residential area. And I really feel sorry for a lot of the underprivileged people who are going to get stuck out in some industrial area in affordable apartments.
Thank you. Any other cards? I started off and I think I probably showed my hand pretty early. And I, matter of fact, when we got done with the last meeting, I was showing my hand. I didn't know how it was going to be ready, as complicated as it is. I don't know if I'm going to study that, if I study this for another two weeks, if I'll figure it out or not. But I, I feel like that, you know, we can't be, I don't think it's important that we're the first. Like I said, I talked to the three different city managers and they're, they're not, they're not in any hurry. And one of them has a project that's going to lean on this. So, and I'm not saying we don't need to get this done. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying that I, my first thought for tonight would be, talk to you and get some input on, on how long and how on this and that, but, you know, a little bit of a table thing. One of the questions I had, and I didn't really get to it because I didn't think it was necessary at that point was, you know, what, what more could you do if you had two more weeks? What, what would you look at? Who would you talk to? And is there not, I will say this, one of the state, state, one of the city managers said this to me, that their planner went to a state planning, and you probably did the same. Is, and that, to me, if you're going to a state planning association or something like that, there should be some clarity because it doesn't sound like anybody's on the same page. It's a 200-page book and everybody's on a different page. So I would like, you know, I've never seen anything like this where we're trying to put something together where nobody is, is saying, no, this is how it works. This is, this is the way it goes. Because everybody's doing something different. And that to me is, is a confusing factor. The people I talk to are probably doing something different than we're doing. And I don't really understand why there's no continuity on this. Why, well, we're going to do it because this fits us better and we're going to do it this way. You know, somebody used the word out there, you know, wanted more clarity. You know, I'd like more clarity. I, I want this to be a little more simple. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I want to make the motion after I finish this. This, this act is like a piece of clay that everyone has been given and being told, make whatever you want. And as long as it fit three basic criteria or however many basic. And I think it's time for elected officials to start building up trust factors with the people that they represent. I know though, that kind of talk won't get me reelected, but I'm not going to.
That sounded like it.
Yeah. But it, it is time for, and this is not ready, as you use your cliche, ready for prime time. And based on that, if all is well and done, my motion is on ordinance number 46, 2023, Florida Live Act Ordinance and Resolution Number 252023, to delay it or cancel.
City Attorney.
Right. I just, I believe you said ordinance 46. It's ordinance 48, 2023. And the resolution, yes.
To, to put it, let's table it until we know more about how to form the clay.
I have a motion on tabling 48, 2023.
We, do we like to set a date certain or is it on the table after we advertise?
The first, where we are. Let's bring it back to the second meeting of November.
Brad, what do you think?
Can I just make one comment before you make your final motion in a second? I just want you to understand that adopting or not adopting this ordinance today does not prevent someone submitting a qualifying live local project. The ordinance does not prevent that. We're not allowing something by adopting this ordinance or preventing something. So I just want you to understand that. What it does do without this ordinance is it makes it very difficult for staff to apply it. I'll give you an example. The law, the law says that we're supposed to apply the city's multifamily standards to residential development on property that's not even zoned for residential. We don't know how to work that with a, with the, with an applicant at this stage without this ordinance. So this ordinance provides a lot of clarity and guidance for staff. We spent quite a lot of time researching this and working on this and attending those, those state association meetings and speaking with even the Fuller Housing Coalition and their attorney. And we believe that this ordinance meets everything that we ask for, what we think, how we can apply this law. If we have more time, I can make minor tweaks. Based on the amount of time and work hours that we spend on this, I'm not sure we can make any more significant changes unless you have a specific change. So if we have two more weeks to look at this, I'm not sure I'll be able to really propose anything that's significant back to you.
I, you can ask the clerk, but I believe there's a skip week between the second meeting in October and the first meeting in November. So that might be a three-week gap there. So if you do two weeks and then want to go to the first meeting in November, I think that's a five-week stretch.
Go with that.
I can go with that. And all I want to see is that when I look at the numbers, the percentage that economically disadvantaged get a good shot at everything. That's all I want to see.
The first meeting in November is 14 November.
14 November.
14? Right. And I would advise staff, you know, they're looking at these, we get an application. We have an ordinance in progress, which I call zoning in progress, and we'll let them know if we get an application. We're going to apply this ordinance once it's approved. If you do approve an ordinance, I, I believe you need to be comfortable with it. Because once you pass the ordinance and you get an application, it's going to be judged by that ordinance. And they have an expectation to be judged by that ordinance. So by the time you change it, you may have applicants being developed under this addition of the ordinance, if you will. And by the time you amend it, you'll capture others. But I'd be comfortable with the ordinance if you decide to pass. It may not be perfect and you have the right to read, to amend it through.
It will never be perfect. I just feel like we can be, I don't know, I just don't think it's right. I have a motion.
I would second it. My concern would be if we pass the ordinance as it is, are we really going to have the ability to continue to work on it until we hit a problem?
Yeah, that's what, I think we've all asked that. And that's what I said earlier, is it fluid? You know, is it, is it changing? Can we go in there and just, as he used clay, I use water. Is it flexible? And as somebody said out there, it's been my experience, and I've heard from, you know, guidance, that once you pass an ordinance, it's, it's more difficult to get in there and change it.
And the second.
And we were even thinking about adding something to the ordinance tonight. You said if we add this, we could do that. I think that that's a good sign. We're not ready.
My second question. Joe, does your ordinance include going back to P and Z?
I can include that in.
Please.
I love to see other eyes read everything. Because my eyes are getting bad as I get older. But include the, the motion to go back to P and Z.
Second.
And was there a date? I just wanted to be clear on the date that you wanted to come back to council.
The, the date that you said.
November 14th.
November 14th.
November 14th, yeah.
I was asking the clerk.
Okay, that's the date. Date, sir.
All right, I have a motion for the tabling until November 14th. I have a second, from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Tabling passes unanimously. Hey. Not ready. Okay, wait. We're going, he distracted me here. We got to go. All right, so we are now, City Manager.
On to item 9C, which is industrial conditional use permits. This is ordinance number 49, 2023. This is the first reading and the city attorney will read the, the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 49, 2023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by reclassifying certain industrial uses from conditional uses to permitted or limited uses by amending section 2854 use table, section 28209 to allow laboratory research and testing as a permitted use in the hospital, medical, MHM, and light industrial services, M1 zoning districts. Amending section 28214 to allow mini warehouses a limited use in highway industrial infill M3, downtown mixed-use midtown DMUM, and regional mixed-use industrial park RMU 500 zoning districts. And amending section 28222 to allow warehousing wholesale as a limited use in highway industrial infill M3 zoning district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
This is the first reading and public hearing is scheduled for 24 October, 2023 at 6:30. At the 4, October 2023, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the following change. Maintain the CUP requirements for laboratory, mini warehouses, and warehouse wholesale uses if located within 500 feet of a residential use. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading.
Any questions on the first reading? I see none. Call the card?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Taking my time, Stan. All right.
Okay, this is a
Start up.
Yeah, start, go ahead, start.
This is a conduct first reading related to industrial uses currently designated as conditional uses.
Okay, so what I've, I've submitted to you is a, is my business card, which has over 20 problems identified on, that the city has. And as you know, those include the spraying with, spraying people with sewage and fraud and so forth.
You've talked about that.
Yeah, so let's not talk about that, but, but let's talk about the ones that have to do with the problems that the city of Titusville has on these items.
On, on this one. C.
Let's see, which is nine, what is?
It's 9C.
9C, okay, all right. So, so I mentioned that we, and what, here's what I got my notes here. Is that I'm concerned about what our staff can do. And the, the ordinance is getting, it's thicker and thicker and thicker and thicker. And, and I don't think our, our staff can handle this stuff, just like that last ordinance. I mean, it's just getting so big that they can't understand what they're doing. And I say that because I recently sent you a site plan that I examined that was passed. And I call, you know, it's SNJ Oaks. I'm just giving you an example, just an example.
I got you, I got you.
I'm not trying to go into that. But what I did is I, I, I redlined that thing with over 40 problems. That's the approved site plan. Over 40 problems. That I would not pass because I used to do the review of site plans. So, so, yeah, I did it here, I did it in Brevard County. And some people on, especially planning and zoning and so, didn't like what I said. But in this case is that I'm seeing all kinds of problems and I'm calling some problems like, for example, But in this case is that I'm seeing all kinds of problems, and I'm calling some problems like, for example, water flows downhill. When you violate that, that's not good. Rocks don't float. That's violated twice with what they call inverted siphons on that project that Brevard County would never accept, that F D O T would never accept, and I don't see how the city would ever accept. In fact, I knew about this stuff even before I took my exam. So I think we've got a big problem with staffing and understanding our ordinances or regulations. So that's all.
Thank you. Well said. Any other cards? First reading, we move on.
City Attorney will read the procedures for quasi judicial.
During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the City Clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak for the City Council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. To staff and applicant, have all witnesses that attend to speak sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised? Regarding ex parte communications, in the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed.
This is item nine D, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, S S A number one dash twenty twenty-three, the Lieberman multifamily rezoning on State Road four oh five, South Street, with concept plan. The applicant is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to construct a multifamily development consisting of eight three-story buildings with up to two hundred and forty-five residential units. The property lies east of the intersection on South Street, S R four oh five, and Swan Lake Drive, generally in the vicinity of the entrance to Swan Lake Estates Residential Manufactured Home Park. The intent of the request is to change six point six five acre adjacent to South Street of a larger one hundred and twenty acre site from conservation future land use to the city's high-density residential future land use category and rezone the same portion of the property from open space, O R, zoning to high-density residential R three district. The City Attorney will read the ordinances. There are two for the record.
Ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately six point six five plus or minus acres of property located east of South Street, S R four oh five, and across from Swan Lake Drive, having Brevard County partial ID numbers twenty-two thirty-five zero eight zero zero two and twenty-two thirty-five zero eight zero zero two five seven from the conservation and high-density residential future land use designations to the high-density residential future land use designation and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number forty-three, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three of the City of Titusville by amending a zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the open spacing Recreation, O R, and multifamily high-density residential R three zoning districts to the multifamily high-density residential R three zoning district on approximately six point six five plus minus acres of property located east of South Street, South Route four oh five, I'm sorry, State Route four oh five, and across from Swan Lake Drive, having Brevard County partial ID numbers twenty-two thirty-five zero eight zero zero two and twenty-two thirty-five zero eight zero zero two five seven, and providing for an effective date.
At the Planning and Zoning Meeting on sixteen August twenty twenty-three, acting as your local planning agency, recommended approval of S S A one dash twenty twenty-three to amend the future land use and rezoning with the following two conditions. That the hundred and nine point two acres of wetland be set aside in a conservation easement, and number two, that the five point two four acres being developed be reduced to four point nine nine acres. The motion was approved six one with the no vote. Member Mascasso voted based on inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. The applicant requested to table the public hearing at the previous meeting on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. City Council tabled the item to the regular council meeting tonight, and the hearing was readvertised. Mr. Parrish is here to describe the actions that we're about to go on.
Council members, I just want to point you to page three seventy-eight of your packet. I'll just identify the findings and our recommendation, and then I'll go through a few of the pages to give you an explanation as to why we came up with these findings and this recommendation. The findings that we identified was that the item could be supported in the comprehensive plan and rezoning with the following. The upland portions of the property can be made contiguous under one land use category and zoning district with minimal impact to adjacent wetlands. And that's based on comprehensive plan and future land use settlement policies one point fourteen point six and one point sixteen point four. In addition, the rezoning is consistent with the zoning in the area as described in the twenty sixteen South Street Small Area Plan. That's a small area plan, a localized plan in that area that was adopted by City Council back in that year. In addition, the remaining one hundred-plus acre wetland may be protected in a conservation easement or deed restriction, and that's consistent with comprehensive plan future land use settlement objective one point seventeen. However, there are items that could be identified to be not in support of this amendment. The applicant is proposing to enlarge the area to be designated with the high-density residential land use and the R three multifamily zoning district by impacting a greater portion of the wetland than what appears to be necessary to make reasonable use of the land, and that be related to comprehensive plan Conservation Element Strategy one point six point three point two. If this is approved, we would recommend the following condition. A conservation easement or deed restriction of the hundred and nine-plus acre wetland portion of the property as described in the Conceptual Wetlands Impact Mitigation and Management Plan be recorded. I'm going to point you to page three, I'm sorry, four thirteen of your packet. I'm going to go through some of the exhibits, and then I'm going to go back to the staff report. So page four thirteen of your packet is the concept plan that the applicant has submitted. If this is approved, this concept plan would be tied to the rezoning and would be binding. I'm sorry, it's page four twelve of your packet, excuse me. You see, it's a very large piece of property, and the applicant is proposing several high-density residential multifamily apartment buildings along South Street or along State Road four oh five. And then behind it is going to be a large parking lot area. So if this is approved and the applicant provides to us a site plan, it would have to be relatively consistent with this. Page three thirteen, your next page, you'll see this is a wetland survey that was provided by the applicant.
Yeah, four thirteen.
Excuse me, four thirteen.
Gotcha. I wasn't going back a hundred.
Four thirteen. So you'll see there that is a wetland survey. The applicant is identifying where the actual wetland boundaries are. On page four eighteen of your packet is the comprehensive plan future land use element, or future land use map. And you can see in the subject area, the hundred and nine-plus acre piece of property is bounded by that red boundary on the map on the left side of page four eighteen of your packet. You can see that the majority of the property is colored green. That's a conservation land use. And then the portions that had the H D R, that is high-density residential, that allows fifteen units per acre where that label is located. And that's along South Street. The applicant is suggesting is if this is approved, it would look like the map you see on your right on page four eighteen. And you can see the area that's got the high-density residential would be expanded into the area where it's conservation. The applicant is suggesting to mitigate significant portions of wetlands in order to create this area to build this development. I'm going to skip now to page four fifty-eight of your packet. This is an excerpt, a map that was submitted to us with the environmental report. What this shows is the area that the applicant is proposing. Proposed land development areas for the whole project is about sixteen acres. And you can see in the green hatch, hatch label, that is what the applicant is suggesting to be filled. That's the primary impact. Then you have a secondary impact, which has got the parallel color, the orange color on that aerial. The applicant has the right, and I'm going to go through some of the comprehensive plan policies in a moment in the staff report, but I just want to point out a couple things. The first thing usually an applicant will do in order to amend the boundaries of the conservation land use is to give us a wetland survey to give us the true boundaries of where that wetland is. And then that, the comprehensive plan allows an applicant to do that, and then we're supposed to amend that conservation land use accordingly. That's the first step. The applicant has done that. The next step is now the applicant wants to make a buildable area and fill in some portions of the wetland to make an area buildable for a reasonable type of development, in this case, multifamily development. And the third question is, how far can that go? And that's where staff was unable, that's where we struggled. How far was appropriate? So if you see the areas that have the yellow line there on that map, I'm still on page four fifty-eight. See, that's the project boundary. And then the area that's got that green hatch, that area is going to be filled in. And it's questionable whether all of that needs to be filled in in order to make a buildable area that's reasonable to have reasonable use of your property. That's also related to some policies in the comprehensive plan, having reasonable use of your property. Then the next question is, how far can you go? So we looked at the area, especially to the south. That's about two acres. That's a pretty significant impact. When we overlook at the concept plan, it looks like the majority of that area is going to be for the parking in order to serve the multifamily development. Again, that's conceptual. This has not gone through a site plan process, nor has this received mitigation permits from St. John's Water Management District. You can also see that the secondary impact looks like it will go to the property on the south, which is south of the subject properties. In other words, there may be a secondary impact to a wetland that belongs to someone else. I'm going to refer you to page page three eighty-seven of your packet. And I'm just going to go through some of these comprehensive plan objectives and policies, so you understand what we reviewed here. When we look at a comprehensive plan amendment, we identify comprehensive plan policies and objectives that are related to the project, whether it's support or against. In this case, we found those objectives and policies and identified what we believe are most relevant. So we didn't go through the entire comprehensive plan. Technically, when you go through one of these land use amendment analyses, you're really looking at the whole document together. So it's not kind of picking and choosing one particular policy to say it's inconsistent or not. It's kind of looking at everything together. So the reason I say that is because, again, the first step was they provide to us a wetland survey to identify where the conservation land use line should be. And the next question is, do they have reasonable use of their property? How much of an impact should they be allowed in order to have that reasonable use? This is something you're going to have to determine. On page three eighty-seven of your packet, the first policy there, or objective from the future land use settlement, one, objective one point one, talks about character of districts and types of land use categories. The land use category is consistent with the small area plan, the South Street Small Area Plan. The land use category they're proposing is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be along an Ontario road. South Street, State Road four oh five is in Ontario. The next one further down, Future Land Use Element Policy one point fourteen point one. Sites for residential development shall be located throughout the city. That's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. Our staff comment states, within half-mile radius of the subject property, as multifamily, single-family, manufactured housing communities, which provide a variety of lot sizes, floor areas, setbacks, residential densities, and housing types. Small area plan, looked at this, looked at this entire area north of Foxlake Road as primarily residential. So that's consistent. Further down on page, on that same page, Policy one point fourteen point six. High-density residential uses has a maximum density of fifteen units per acre. That's what the applicant currently has on the portions of their property. They're expanding that. So it's consistent. High residential land use and zoning districts are compatible with the surrounding land use pattern. A six-plus acre portion of the subject property is currently high-density residential, and several properties in close proximity to south are also high-density. So again, we find this consistent as far as the land use. The last policy we identified here on that same page, one point fourteen point eight. Negative impacts of residential land uses on environmentally sensitive areas shall be minimized. This is where you need to make a determination as to whether they are proposing a reasonable impact and have a significant impact in order to allow for a reasonable use of the property. On the next page, Policy one point fourteen point nine. Residential development sites shall be accessible to and provide essential public services at levels of service adopted by the comp plan. We did not see a concurrency-related issue here related to the transportation or provision of utilities to this property. On that same page, I'm looking at page three eighty-eight of your packet. I'm looking at Future Land Use Element Strategy one point sixteen point two. When conservation land use is present on site, on specific site, the property owner shall submit a preliminary environmental assessment, including a wetland delineation when wetlands are present. The reason for this is to allow that property owner to justify being able to change the boundaries of the conservation land use, and that's what they're doing here. Further down, one point sixteen point four. Impacts to areas designated as conservation land use designation shall be considered if it is unavoidable due to absence of feasible and or practical alternatives for reasonable use of the land or the regulations create an inordinate burden on existing use of the land or a vested right to a specific use of land, or due to a significant site constraint and or practical design modification constraint. The allowable impact shall be based upon site-specific evaluation determination determined through the permitting process conducted by all regulatory agencies with jurisdiction. Again, we're not at a site plan stage, we're not at a permitting stage. So if you look at this policy to see if they are really, is there an argument here that somehow we're preventing them from having reasonable use of their land? On the next page, page three eighty-nine of your packet. Objective, Future Land Use Element Objective one point seventeen. This is about natural resources protection. The applicant is proposing to impact five-plus acres of wetland in order to preserve a hundred and nine acres of wetland in a conservation easement or deed restriction. So I just want to point that out. That's how they are addressing this particular policy, or this particular objective. The same page, Policy one point seventeen point one. The following items shall be addressed in analysis to land use changes. And so we've identified several here. They provided all that evidence in order to address this particular policy. Again, though, it's going to be evaluated again at a site plan stage. Another important goal from the comprehensive plan on that same page, three eighty-nine. Conservation Element Goal one. To preserve and enhance the quality of the natural environment through preservation, conservation, and appropriate management of the vital natural resources, including air and so on. So the goal and subsequent objectives that we identified on the next few pages, address environmental impacts and preservation. The approximately sixteen acres of development area has a mixture of uplands and wetlands. Although the conceptual site plan is general in nature, it appears that some wetland impacts are proposed. These impacts would require permitting by the appropriate agencies, and according to the Environmental Resource Report, will likely require mitigation. So that's our staff comment response to that particular policy. On the next page, three ninety. Comprehensive Plan Conservation Element Policy one point six point one states, the development of wetlands shall be addressed in development regulations according to the following criteria. Again, it kind of seems like it's addressing really that we addressed this issue during a site plan stage. Again, that kinda seems like it's addressing really that we addressed this issue during a site plan stage, but it's something we have still have to address in some form during this stage without a permit. So staff's comment states that according to the FDP, the Uniform Mitigation Assessment Method, that's the UMAAM, that's the kinda assessment system that they use in order to evaluate the functional value of a wetland. The applicant provided a report with some information about that. The applicant's environmental report describes the functional value of the wetlands on a scale from zero, meaning not present, to ten, optimal, to current functional value of onsite wetlands, and identified them as a rate score of eight, which is pretty high. According to the applicant's report, the proposed wetland functional loss is less than the proposed wetland functional gain. Therefore, the development concept as presented will result in no net loss of wetland function. And we didn't, I personally didn't understand it, we worked with the applicant to figure that out, but they're gonna have their experts here to explain that. They are gonna be impacting some wetland, but because they're gonna be improving the remaining wetland and conserving it, they're actually not taking away wetland, and so it's a no-net loss. So the applicant can better explain that. Another important policy that you need to consider is on page three ninety-one, and this is the last one I'll mention. Comprehensive plan, conservation element policy one point six point three. Specifically, strategy one point six point three point two. And it states, at a minimum, wetlands five acres or more in size shall be designated as conservation land use, and wetlands less than five acres will be subject to review to determine what protection of any. So staff's comment here, it states, subject property contains approximately one hundred and fourteen-plus acres of wetlands. So the question is, do you look at this particular strategy to prevent this? Or do you look at the other policies and strategies that I've identified on the previous pages to help you make a determination of one first? Are they entitled to be able to change the boundary of the conservation land use with a proper wetland survey? How much of an impact can they be allowed to have in order to make a buildable area appropriate for a multifamily development under the current land use and zoning that they're proposing? And then the third question, how much of that impact should they be allowed? Now, this, the strategy says five acres to more shall be in conservation land use. The way the staff looks at this is that we look at in conjunction with all the other policies. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this application, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Member Nelson.
Brad, you talked about, or somewhere in the staff report, it talks about the three and a half acres as being what would be the minimum they would need to do this project.
Is there a particular page that?
Three ninety-one.
Sorry?
Three ninety-one.
And what line are you looking at? Are you looking at my last, the last comment? I believe it's line forty-one? Line forty-one there of the staff report?
Yes.
On that page, okay. So it stated that the applicant could remove the proposed impact to the wetland located to the south property boundary. And that's two, you had several acres there on the south part. Thereby reducing the impact potentially by three and a half acres. The alternative could also eliminate the potential secondary impacts to wetlands on the adjacent property.
Yeah, sorry, I have a problem with, you've got, you're impacting not only your property, but the property to the south of you.
We'll let him.
We'll let him.
The applicant will be upright after we get to ask the questions.
That's gonna be one of my questions.
So I think we'll hold on to that. Any other comments here before we get the applicant up? Go ahead, absolutely.
Two out of the three, one, the third option, I think, that if I couple with you, one, two, three, is that we realize that is five point four-three acres of wetland, is that correct? Or, or that will affect?
The applicant is proposing to impact five point four-two acres of wetland, according to our, what I stated here on the report.
The other option is that, can something be done to replace that?
Staff believes there may be an alternative to maybe reduce that potential impact.
You can reduce it, but you can't replace it.
Replace it with?
You know, you know, once you fill it in, can you direct the water and, the, the, the holding water thing to another place, somewhere?
Right, I mean, they'll have to provide stormwater facilities on the property for the development within that buildable area, that, that project area. I believe that's what you're asking for.
Okay, so we won't, we can't redo what the wetland, the natural wetlands would do, but we can put a,
Stormwater.
Rainwater drain pond on the property somewhere, that would be required?
My understanding is based on that drawing I showed you on page four fifty-eight?
Four fifty-eight?
Yeah, if you look at that, it's got that area with the hats drawings on, colored codes on top. They got a yellow line there, to me, that looks like that's the project boundary. So all the development's gonna happen there. They'll fill that area, that'll be there. And so any kind of improvements, including facilities, ancillary facilities to help support the project, would be within that boundary. That's my understanding.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the applicant up, and I'm sure there'll be questions, and hopefully you can clarify some things for us.
Absolutely, it will be. Good evening, and thank you. My name is Bruce Moye, I'm representing the developer, I'm the president of MBB Engineering out of Melbourne, Florida. Thank you for letting us bring this project to your attention, and we hope that we can explain what we're trying to do and answer any questions that you have, as well as any comments that might come out of the audience. Before I start, I just wanna make sure that what we're asking for is consistent with what's on your agenda, because I think that's, there's a transposed number. It's not five point two-four, it's five point four-two?
Five point four-two, is the wetland impact, right?
I think there was something that said five point two-four, I just wanna make sure there wasn't a typo somewhere, so I just wanna make sure that's clear. Second, based on all the information provided by staff, which was very thorough, appeared to me, I think I was paying attention, that we're consistent with pretty much everything except for one thing, and that's, can we impact the wetland, and if so, how much? So we are consistent with the South Street Plan, we're consistent with every other comprehensive policy that you have, and we'll get back to the wetland part here after a little brief introduction to the project. So what we have here is a hundred and almost twenty-six acre property on South Street that Mr. Lieberman's owned for over thirty years. If you look at your land use map, we have six isolated development pods on the property, and the remainder is, is conservation. So what we're doing is, now that we've done a wetland determination, is trying to correct the map, because the map's wrong. So we, so we wanna correct the map, that's, I think, point number one. So what we like to do is take those six areas and consolidate them into one developable upland piece of property. So in order to do that and have a viable project, we went to the environmental experts and said, how, what can we do? You know, what's the minimum impact? What, you know, what can we really do on this property? The developer really wants to do three hundred units, but that didn't pan out based on what area that we have, because your density is taking over the, is taking on the area that we can actually develop. So if you take the overall area of the sixteen point three-nine acres, forget that we own one hundred and twenty-six acres, we're fifteen units per acre on that sixteen point three-nine acres. So can we get there? Two questions that we have to answer for you to be consistent with your comp plan, and then one that what we believe we can answer at the Water Management District, because they're the ones that are gonna be looking at this. So our environmental people are telling us that we can impact about five point four-two acres, including the secondary impacts, and keep all our mitigation on the property through conservation and enhancement. Because the way the Water Management District looks at it is, we want no loss of wetland function. So what we're gonna do is take a wetland that's currently now rated an eight at a hundred and ten acres approximately, and give it a higher number with a various, with a reduction in overall area to come up with the same overall value. So that's how that works. Now, secondary impacts came up. We're impacting wetlands on other people's properties. Technically, that's not true. We are impacting the wet, we would impact the wetland physically by filling it, but the secondary impact they used as a number that they have to include in the mitigation part, we're not gonna disturb that wetland, but they use it to show it, to show what your mitigation has to be to, to accommodate what they feel are secondary impacts. As you get close to the wetland, you have what they call secondary impacts, or not physical impacts, they're just socio-economic impacts. So they throw that into the number when they do their UMAAM analysis and their wetland mitigation calculations to make sure that there's no functional wetland loss. So we're not gonna be disturbing wetlands on other people's properties, it's just a, it's like a secondary zone that they look at. Just make sure that we're not, that they're including that in the calculation. So, so I guess really the point I wanna make, and I know there's gonna be more comments probably coming from the audience, is how do we, how do we overcome the, the, the wetland impact? I believe that question's already been answered. That was answered, I believe, when we did Huntington Park. It's exactly what we're doing here. We took a, a land use map that was wrong. It had uplands that were considered conservation, and it had wetlands that were considered developable. We had the wetland determination, we fixed it, we were allowed, those, those wetlands were probably almost as big as these, and we were allowed to impact them. And we impacted them as minimum as we could to make a viable project. And we actually have a viable project under construction there. So that's what we're doing here. So I think that's been answered. Now, is five point four-two too much? I think it's pretty reasonable to come to this board and ask to be able to develop thirteen percent of your property. That's what we're asking for. We wanna develop thirteen percent of our property. That's pretty reasonable. I think that's the definition of reasonable. So, and put the rest in the conservation, so it's protected in perpetuity, and enhance it so it has a higher wetland function. To me, it's a win-win. We, yes, we have a concept plan, and if, if, if it's gonna be binding, I have a real good feeling we're gonna be back here before you, because this is very conceptual, and it will probably not look just like this. It'll probably be different, because we have trees to look at, we have floodplains to look at, we have all kinds of things to look at. So this is very conceptual. I imagine if this is gonna be binding, it'll deviate some, maybe enough to where we'll come back to this board for reapproval of the actual plan. But I think that, I think we've answered all the questions, I feel we're consistent with all your comprehensive policies. And that concludes my introduction, and I'll take any questions.
Questions up here? Member Nelson.
Of course, first. Okay, so the map on four sixty?
I don't have your number, so they're with me a little bit.
That's true.
Okay, there's a map from Florida, Environmental Consultant.
Is that the color one that looks like this?
I think so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, that's the one, yep.
Okay, so we're talking about filling in that area on the south end, and some area on the north end. And the area on the north end, I really don't have a problem with, because you're right. That way, you're putting the two pieces of property together. I have more of a heart attack on the south end. And I hate, I hate to see wetlands filled in, you know? But that being said, I know that sometimes that happens. What is the? If I were to say to you, how much do you actually, actually need? I'm afraid to ask that. What would you say?
Yeah, I, I think to make a viable project, and I said this, I think at the last meeting, that we need all that we can get, because if we don't have enough units, that's just not a viable project. We're seeing projects that are too small, or smaller than what we're asking for. By the time they get through the design and the, and the, and the construction costing, and have the project, they, it's no longer economically feasible, so. Like I said, we really wanted three hundred, but we think we can make it work to two forty-five, and if we have to do that, we need every, every, every square inch that we're asking for.
Okay.
You know, now we will have, you know, we have required buffers along the property line, so we're,
And trees.
So it doesn't mean that we're gonna be going all the way to the property line.
Okay, and trees.
Of course, we got, there are a lot of trees on this property, yes.
Otherwise, you may have proscisters out in front.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, and, um, this is a tough one. Because I understand that it's, no matter what housing we, we need, whether it's upscale or down, we need more housing, and so. My, my thoughts are, is that we have slowly used a little bit of, taken away a little bit of the wetland here, and a little bit of wetland there, and so forth. On this side of four oh five, on that side of four oh five, and so forth. And you get the idea of what I'm, I'm meaning. Is that, where do we get to the point that we just have to stop? And, but, you know, I know that as long as there's a need, and you wanna make it feasible for the development as it is, but my question is, where do we stop? And when we redirect these waters, so to speak, are they gonna have the same pa, uh, uh, impact on nature? That's what I'm trying to resolve in my, in my head. I know that you're not gonna, you know, you're gonna cover up one hole, basically, simplify it, and go dig another one some, basically, somewhere, and make the water go there. So, but I, I think it's a good effort, but I'm, I'm still wrestling right now with the continual loss of piece here and a piece there of, of wetland. So I just want you to understand that that's, I'm totally not against the project, I think it's, it's good, and I think that you have to make, as a developer, as a developer, they have to make it feasible. But it's, it's still that, that slowly eating away of, of our wetlands that I'm concerned about, right, right? Right at this point, I'm not saying that I'm not going to, what my next step is gonna be, but I just let you know what my concerns are.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I'd like to answer that with, you know, right now, that wetland's been that way for a while, and it's allowed the introduction of invasive species. So you have a wetland that's losing value if you leave it the way it is. So our plan would be to go in there and take all those invasive species out, so you have a better wetland. So it's a little bit of a trade-off, a little bit, you know, less of a better wetland is probably more valuable than a continued degrading wetland.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Real quick, how long did you say the property owners owned that property?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. Is it just timing, or is the market right, or whatever? Why, why is it now that it's a good time to, to do that? Is it just?
Yeah, it's, the timing's good, and, um, there was a, if, I don't know, that's a little bit of a story, maybe you need to know, maybe you don't, but they'd actually sold a portion of the property to Salvation Army, and Salvation Army never developed, so they bought it back.
Okay.
Because they really think it's, the time is now to develop it.
Okay, well, that makes sense. You're done? Member Nelson, one more time.
Remind me, how long are you guys going to maintain that wetland?
That, that's all in the district guidelines, because what will happen is, once we, once we fix it, and then remove all the invasives, and, and make it better, improve it, and put it in conservation, then we dedicate it to the Water Management District for permanent maintenance.
Okay, okay. I thought there was somewhere in there you said, you were gonna maintain it for five years, ten years?
It'll be all in the agreement, on the dedication agreement with the Water Management District.
Okay.
Number Cole.
Brad, you said that a portion of the land was going to affect the wetlands on another pro, adjacent property, and you said it wasn't. Which is the true answer?
So there's a difference between primary impacts and secondary impacts. So primary impact is the actual filling of the wetland. So we would lose that wetland. But what they do is, is, is normally, when you develop next to a wetland, you create a, a buffer, and St. John's requires it to be fifteen-foot minimum, twenty-five-foot average, as you, as you- as you, as you abut that wetland. So if you don't preserve that, they ding you for what they call secondary impacts. They're not real impacts, they're maybe perceived or possible impacts of having people living right on a wetland line. So they, they actually make you mitigate for what they call secondary impacts, which is in lieu of providing that buffer between the upland and the wetland.
So?
Hold on, uh, you done?
I'm done.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
Yes, and, uh, the extended maintenance on these wetlands now, this still have to be approved by, uh, the management, right?
Yes, there'll be an agreement in place, yes.
You guys got several.
And the, uh, the maintenance will be by whom? Once the developer is gone?
Once the Water Management District accepts it.
Right.
Then there'll be their responsibility.
Their responsibility to perform the maintenance on it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
So, I don't want to argue with you, but I'm sitting here thinking in my head. I fill in a wetland here, and there's a wetland over here, and at some point, this wetland has to have an impact on the wetland that still exists. You know what I'm saying? So I, I start filling in.
What they'll do is, they act, they, when you, when you do a conservation area and you do wetland impacts, the, the Water Management District will, will make you put a, a physical barrier between the remaining wetland and what you've disturbed, so that, so that it doesn't, you don't have any further impacts.
What kind of barrier?
Usually it's like a split rail fence, or something like that, some type of fence.
Okay.
So it kind of, it's, they're trying to, um, prevent people from approaching into the wetland.
But you know what I'm saying? It, to me, my logic is, I fill in a hole here. And the hole here has to be filled in a little bit higher than that wetland, right? So rain comes along, uh, and eventually, that pile of dirt that I put over here starts leveling out and impacts that area over there.
Hopefully not. We, we, we designed the slopes so they, they have a tendency not to erode and stabilize them, so that doesn't happen. If the fill is extensive, and we have to put a retaining wall, then that would prevent that from happening, which happens in a lot of cases.
Okay, okay.
Vice Mayor, you back?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm back this time again, because this is, uh, I want to make the right decision, and, and I, and I, I think it's a viable project, but, okay, now, my concerns, uh, you know, when dealing with, uh, my background is engineering on, on ships, and, uh, it was always discoveries that would kill me, you know, as far as making money. When you're going through there, you, you put a, you put a bid on something, you say that you can do it for this price, and all of a sudden, you get in there and you look at it, and it's a lot more damage in there than you could, or, you, um, you could ever imagine. What happens now if, where you go in there, and, and as you laying out all your plan, you go through the discovery period, and you're going to have to, uh, move, uh, make your buildings around this particular tree, when the, the old Mr. Oak is still sitting there, and you got to deal with all that? What happens? Are you going to come back and ask us for some more, uh, wetland? Please explain that to me.
No, 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 we're going to, our, our plan is to work within, once, once, assuming the comp plan amendment gets approved, that line's set. We can't, unless we come back and ask for more, we don't get any more. And I don't think we're going to get any more if we ask for more later on. So we won't do that. Well, that line will be set basically in stone. So, but that's going to be our limits, that's where we'll have to develop to. If trees get in the way, you know, we took a, a typical four plan that we've done for several different multifamily developments, uh, throughout the county, and just put them on there. Now, will we make longer buildings, and maybe put two together and make a longer building? Because we don't have the room, uh, to, to make eight separate buildings, we maybe, we have four bigger buildings, because we have to work around trees and things like that. And that's the kind of thing I'm talking about that'll change. But the, the area of development i- is legally described, and that cannot change unless you change it.
Okay, anything else in your presentation?
That's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure, absolutely.
You stated that the condition about the 109 acres being put into a condition, that's something that they're volunteering as part of this. So this, okay, but you did, you, you made a statement that the Water Management District would accept it, is that true?
That's possible. We'll, we'll talk to them about taking it as far as maintenance. Usually you dedicate conservation to somebody, um, typically the Water Management District will take it.
If they don't, so this becomes a condition of approval, and it turns out that during the site plan process, that they're not going to accept it, what would be the alternative? Would it be a deed restriction?
They would, the property owner would have to keep it and maintain it.
And then the stipulations you're talking about, as far as removing invasive species, and having, uh, stipulations in there on some kind of recorded document, where the property owner will be having to manage that property, is something?
Yes, that, that'll all be spelled out in the Water Management District permit and agreement for conservation.
That's assuming, well, in the, the scenario where the Water Management District doesn't accept it, though, there'd be some kind of?
It'll still be an easement.
And it, well, it won't be an easement dedicated to anyone.
It'll be established on itself.
A deed restriction, then?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. Because otherwise, if it's an easement, it's going to be dedicated to someone, the city's not going to accept it, and the Water Management District doesn't, then the only alternative really is going to be a deed restriction on the property.
Fine.
All right, thank you. Call cards, please.
Tony Shifalo.
Good evening, Mary Spar, Coco. I'm speaking for Sierra Club. This multifamily project involves filling part of a forested wetland, one of those special forested wetlands that are part of a huge swath of wetlands that runs from MIMs down through State Road 50. Now, as you all know, the land use change must be decided by consistency with the comp plan, and the comp plan says that conservation land boundaries must be updated to match the surveyed wetland's line. And this should be good news for the applicant, since the conservation land boundary adjustment gives him 1.23 extra acres of uplands, with a potential for 19 more units and quite a bit more connectivity. Now, looking at the comp plan, what you need to know right away is that Conservation Element Strategy 1.6.3.2 says that wetlands five acres and greater in size shall be conservation land use. Plus, there is no provision for multifamily projects and conservation land use. Single family, yes, limited development, but not multifamily. So staff looked at some other comp plan policies. One policy says that an applicant is entitled to reasonable use of his property. So what is reasonable use? Does reasonable use mean he can fill 5.42 acres of wetlands over and above the extra 1.23 acres the wetland line adjustment gives him? Just so that he can make the desired profit from the exact project he wants to build? Staff has not left their opinion on this to your imagination. Staff stated their opinion in two places. Page 391 of your agenda packet, quote, "The applicant is proposing to enlarge the area to be designated with a high-density residential land use and R3 zoning by impacting a greater portion of the wetland than appears to be necessary to make reasonable use of the land." Then staff goes on to point out a specific way to make the wetland impact smaller, filling less of the wetland at the south end of the projects. So staff thinks maybe a little adjustment could be made, but filling 5.242 acres is not necessary to give reasonable use of the land. This comment is repeated on page 394, under filings, items that do not support the comprehensive land minute.
I might need another minute?
Oh, please, that would be great.
Let's do one more minute.
Okay, so they're saying, you know, their sentence that, um, the applicant, th- this, um, it, project, um, impacts a greater portion of the wetland that appears than appear, than what appears to be necessary to make reasonable use of the land. And then they cite CE, that's Conservation Element Strategy 1.6.3.2. Finally, I hope Brad does not mind if I quote his comment in response to your questioning at the August 22nd meeting. Summing up staff's position, he said, quote, "We're not convinced that the full request is necessary." Sierra Club agrees with that. In conclusion, bear in mind that the applicant can always come back with something more reasonable. Right now, though, please deny this request, and as your reason, cite Conservation Element Strategy 1.6.3.2.
Thank you very much.
I think we're at the point we need to stop. I'm here, proud person, speaking for waters. And I, I went through, I went through all the plans there, I read the packet, and I was, I was making stuff, you know, Mary covered a lot of it. But I just want to, the request would allow impacts to wetlands between these isolated areas to cre- create one contiguous development, but the applicant is proposing to impact 5.42 acres of wetlands, and the staff says the applicant is proposing to enlarge the area to be designated with high-density residential land use and R3 zoning by impacting a greater portion of the wetland than what appears to be necessary to make reasonable use of the land. So I don't need to keep copying, um, Mary, because when I looked at the environmental impact study from the, um, developer, the executive summary, I just quit reading after that, "The subject site contains varied soil types, mostly poorly to very poorly drained sand and muck, is subject to frequent ponding, is a depressional area mostly below elevation 20, is in flood zone AE-18.7, contains native live oak and mixed hardwood forested habitats, contains native vegetation including swamp hickory, hackberry, maple, palm, oak, and pine, is comprised mostly of wetlands with the upland areas limited to a long roadway frontage. Development without proper planning could cause adverse environmental impacts to native habitats, native trees, and wetlands. Wetland avoidance, impact minimization, and mitigation are recommended." And that was, that was from their paperwork, not the research that Mary and Sierra Club and I did. So, um, I just want to say, I think we're at the point we need to stop filling in this wetland, and isolating this other wetland, and separating them. How nice, a nice greenway that went from MIMs to below Highway 50 of, of wetland park area. Wow, what an ecological environment that would be. So nice. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next card.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and you can expect me to, uh, tear this project apart. I mean, from what I know, I've been around here for 50 years, so I'm going to disappoint you, though. I don't have any problems to get with it, I don't have any objections to it. So I knew that you were going to expect me to say something. But I'm going to say something else, though, is that, uh, this, this project is, can, uh, area, the area of, all of Ticeville can have some problems later, because the city of Ticeville is violating the stormwater management plan big time. This property drains to that area that has this picture here. You've seen this picture many times. It doesn't, there's, there's six of these, and one of them, you can see through the drains, but this is on the west side of I-95. So, uh, from the stormwater management plan, you can see that this property drains to that area, plus another pro- many properties does, so there's Mr. Nelson's property drain to this area, which I'll show you. And, and what has happened is, between, between, uh, like I said again, I'm not against this project, is that between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. And we're talking about box culverts and so forth like that, mainly box culverts. In fact, there's, let me read one of them to you. It's a, uh, seven-foot by three-foot box culvert, nine-foot by three-foot box culvert, two six-by-four box culverts, two six-by-five box culverts. This guy right here, in community development, they're ignoring this completely. Sustainability plan, what does it do? Nor is it completely. You guys are nuts. You guys are, not a little bit, that's going. The problem is, in other words, what I gave you was my business card, and on my business cards, as a professional engineer, I say one thing that really don't, you don't like. What is it? Water flows downhill. I'm serious, water flows downhill. And that's not the way when they review, for example, SNJ Oaks. They ignore that. And right now, is your master plan, you're ignoring your master plan, and your sustainability plan, what it is, it's been amended, you've got big problems. So, uh, but I am not aga- I'm not against this project. In fact, this, uh, that's going to be four-laned in there someday by FDOT. That's about a 200-foot right-of-way. So it's going to have, uh, it can, it can handle the traffic. Thank you.
That was the last card? Brad, what's, um, I'm not asking you to make the overall decision here, but, um, this is one that the staff is concerned about.
It seems like there's three things you should consider to help you make a decision. Uh, one is, do they provide the wetland survey necessary in order to justify adjusting the boundaries to conservation land use? Two, after that, do they have, uh, in project area that can allow for reasonable use of the property for development, regardless if it's 245 units or whatever that is, just reasonable use of property? And the third question, is it not, how much of an impact is reasonable? So that's really what we, how we evaluated it, and I think that's probably how I would lay it out for you.
Is this one of the larger wetland impacts areas that we, um, I won't say we've ever dealt with, but seems like a large wetland?
It is a very large wetland. I mean, and the applicant's proposing or volunteering to preserve it in some manner through an instrument, whether if the Water Management District takes it, um, they'll, uh, clean it up, um, and the applicant, if the Water Management, Water Management District does not take it, they've said on the record here that they'll accept it and maintain it themselves as property owners. So, yes, it is a very large contiguous wetland, um, and it's contiguous to other properties that are also wetland.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I've pondered over it all weekend, as I read it, and I've heard everything that, uh, has been said. I think it's a good project, but I have one big hurdle that I can't get over. The rules say that we can't go, if it's five miles, uh, five mile, uh, five acres or greater, we stop. I'm not feeling well enough to break the rules. So as far as I'm concerned, we don't go.
Member Nelson?
I'm sort of feeling like, I, I get the north part, and wanting to make it contiguous, the south part, I have a problem with. And I think staff is saying that's 3.5 acres, that would do it, and I don't have a problem with that, because I want them to be able to use their property.
Mayor, I just wanted to remind council that, that there still has rebuttal.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
I got it written right here.
Yes, sir.
We're going to let, but they're We're going to let, but they're going to be able to rebut to all this, too.
Yeah, I was just letting all council know that.
So that's, that's my thought.
This is where I lean forward and say, applicant, your turn. But I appreciate the reminder. But tonight wouldn't have been a night because I got to hear more.
Okay, thank you again. Well, I'm kind of impressed that only two people spoke on this. I think we had more than that at the first reading. So I think those people were satisfied that everything seemed to be okay. I did hear, you know, some comments. I don't know if I heard any evidence. I didn't get any, any inkling of what reasonable is. I think that's your call. You know, that's subjective, obviously. We feel that only developing 13% of our property is, is reasonable. I think asking for less than that would be unreasonable. We are doing exactly what the one speaker said we should do, and that's the recommendations of the environmental consultant. And that is to promote avoidance, which we are. We're avoiding almost 110 acres of existing wetlands to minimize the impact, which we are, we're only impacting about 4%. And we're providing mitigation. And on top of that, we're providing conservation. So I think we're following this to the T. I don't really know what else to add that I didn't already say, except to repeat that I believe, and I see that Mr. Robinson is, Councilman Robinson is, Vice Mayor Robinson is a little torn there. But I think that decision has, is, has already been made. I think that ruling has been made by this council before on a project that had connected wetlands over five acres that allowed the impact. So I don't think you're breaking any rules by approving this. I think you're being consistent. So, you know, bar what anybody else has said, or even staff has not recommended what the definition of reasonable is, I think that this is very reasonable. I think in any other area that we were asking for this, I think that it would be granted because I think it is reasonable that we're minimizing the impact. If there's any concern that you have about the south property, if there's a condition you'd like to add, we certainly would entertain something, but I haven't heard anything specific. You know, we do have to have buffers that are required by your city code. So we think we can provide that and still, you know, protect as many wetlands as possible as well as the abutting properties. So we really request your approval on this. We think it's a very reasonable request.
Thank you. Brad, give me that comp plan, five-and-a-half acre, whatever it is. What's that, what's that read?
Page 391 of your packet. Specifically, comprehensive conservation element strategy number 1.6.3.2 states, "At a minimum, wetlands five acres or more in size shall be designated as a conservation land use." I can read further, but it talks about wetlands that are less than five acres further on.
Say that again.
It says, "At a minimum, wetlands five acres or more in size shall be designated as a conservation land use. And wetlands less than five acres will be subjected, subject to review to determine what protection, if any, they should receive from development."
Okay. Counsel, anybody? Herman? I recall. Well, turn your microphone on.
I'm also conflicted with the five acres because it's in our comp plan. And I guess that concerns me. And I don't, I, it's a tough one because I like the project.
I like the project.
But I'm very much concerned about destroying the five acres of wetlands.
And I think you have shown many times that you do your best with the environment. And, and that's a consistency I can, can deal with. And wasn't there some thought that you would, by doing this project, you would be able to expand what, more wetlands? Was that what it was, there was a counter to that?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't expand more wetlands. We would enhance the wetland, the quality of the wetland, so that it had better function. So even though we're impacting by eliminating some wetlands, the overall value of the wetland will be increased through conservation enhancement so that you have a slightly less wetland, but you have a higher-grade wetland. So that when you do the math, you come out with a, a net gain instead of a net loss. And I was just talking to the owner, and if five acres is really, is really the issue here, we're willing to go to 4.99 of impact and reduce it down to less than five.
Brad.
I'm not sure he understands. The five-acre rule is, oh, okay.
It was something that PZ came up with.
Right, so PZ's comment or recommendation in here, I think they were a little confused. I don't think it was related to the five-acre rule. I think they were looking at five acres of impact and seeing if they could reduce it down. So I'm not sure if that's what they were really trying to get at, but it definitely wasn't related to the five-acre rule of the wetland, from what I understand, in the conservation.
Member Cole.
Okay, so the wetlands we have right now is graded as an eight. And you said you're going to upgrade it. What number are you upgrading it to?
It's not really a number. I, I probably misspoke.
Yeah, that, that number will be graded by the water management district. Our environmental consultant will, will create the enhancement plan. And then he will grade it on what he believes it to be, and the water management district will review that. And if they agree, maybe it goes up to 8.5, maybe it goes up to 9.2, maybe it goes even higher. I don't know, but it has to be such that there's no net loss.
Okay, so upgrading the wetlands, there's a ratio of what you lose if you go from, let's just say hypothetically, from an eight to an 8.5. Is there a ratio of how much you have to mitigate for doing that or how much you don't have to mitigate?
So we would propose the mitigation of what we're going to actually mitigate. And right now, we're proposing 5.42. So they'll run that number and say currently they run a number eight over 100 and, what is it, 114.42 acres of wetlands. And they run the math and you get a score of, I don't know, 99.4 or something like that. And then we take, so we now, the proposed now, the post-condition will be, will mitigate, will fill 5.42 acres of wetlands, will enhance the remaining 109.2 acres. And then when you run the math and you get the new grade, maybe we're up to 98.8 total. So that's how it works. It's, it's, it's a weighted average based on the grade and area.
Member Nelson.
Well, I have to say, I really like staff's figures of 3.5, but I could live with 4.99. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel.
Brad, once we vote on this, if we said yes tonight, we get this to come back to us again, we'll have another bite at this apple in some way, shape, or form.
If you approve what's suggested to you tonight, and they submit to us a site plan consistent with the zoning, it doesn't come back to you. Correct, yeah, only if the concept plan changes significantly.
Vice Mayor.
I, I think, Brad, so before the, the vote is called, make sure we all understand what 4.99 means, because I don't think that we all have a good idea of what that means.
So the, the impact the applicant is suggesting is 5.42 acres of wetland. That's separate from the rule in the comprehensive plan that talks about contiguous wetlands that are five acres and greater can't be, it has to be in conservation land use. That's a totally different topic together, not the same.
I, I was suggesting that as a compromise. That's what Planning and Zoning came up with.
I don't.
I like the.
What, what Planning and Zoning Commission was saying, sounds like, is go ahead and impact the wetland, even though it's in a conserv, the conservation land use is five acres or more, go ahead and impact it. But don't impact it as much as what the applicant was suggesting. So they're only suggesting bringing it down from 5.24 acres to 4.99 acres. But when I look back on that, it seems like they were doing that based on this five-acre rule. So I'm not sure they understood what they were really suggesting here.
So I'm back to the 3.5.
Staff was suggesting that the south part, the, at least, if there's going to be a negotiation as to how much impact could be reduced, you know, drawing back, clawing back, I guess, what the applicant's suggesting, is the area to the south along the property boundary could probably not be encroached on. And I, we just did an estimate. It looks like it's about three and a half acres. So if that's eliminated, then their true impact would be 5.24 minus three and a half, whatever's remaining is their actual impact. But that means then, if you allow that, you're allowing someone to encroach into that conservation land use, even though it's five acres or more. So in other words, you're going potentially against that particular strategy. But just so you understand where staff's perspective was on this, we look at every, all the policies within the conference plan to make that determination. So again, we saw it as, first thing, they gave us a wetland delineation. Now we can change the boundaries of the conservation land use. Their new project boundary within that new upland area, do they have a reasonable project area for a project? I'm not sure what's reasonable. Is it 245 units or is it something smaller than that? If you determine that that's not reasonable, based on other policies in the conference plan, the next question is, how much of an impact to the wetlands should they be allowed? What is reasonable in order to allow a reasonable development?
Well, I agree that we are impacting our wetlands. This is a nice wetland. It's not like the one out of, where we had the hotel.
It's an eight.
Which was, yeah, which was like a two or a three. This is a functional wetland. And my concern is, we're encroaching on that wetland, and yeah, you have that above area around it, but you're still going to impact it somewhat, no matter what. And I mean, it just happens.
Let's, um, Brad, I'm sorry.
My concern is that south half, or that south piece, and wanting to impact down there. So I don't know what is reasonable at that point, other than the 3.5.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm at the point with all my notes that I made and my questions answered, and I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to take one.
I, on, I make the motion, the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, SSA number 1012023, the liberian multifamily and rezoning on State Road 405, South Street, with a, a plan company, a plan, I re, I propose to no.
I guess that's how you can make that motion.
Mayor, I want to, just for my counsel, there's two ordinances. We have the land use and we have the zoning. The first ordinance, 422023, is land, if you're going to have, if we're going to have a motion, I was suggesting that motion, provide the basis for your motion. If it's going to be a denial, which comprehensive plan policies you feel it doesn't meet, which codes it doesn't meet as part of your motion, or if you're going to approve it, that you believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan as stated. And you can look at the report provided by staff.
This is a whole. Okay, let me try it again.
And then, once this motion is over, then we'll have to have a separate motion on the rezoning.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I recommend a motion of no on ordinance number 43422023, City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988. Is that correct? Yeah.
So what, yeah, you're denying, what you're denying, my understanding is a, a land use change from conservation and high-density residential future land use designation to high-density residential future land use. Based on the policy.
That's correct.
We good?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you say, state a policy or particular?
Which comprehensive plan policies or strategies are you basing the failure to present evidences or evidences to?
The denial should be probably based on some kind of particular policy.
Oh, the denial is based on our comprehensive plan of no greater than five.
Is that 1.6.3.2?
That's correct.
Of the conservation element, strategy number. Okay.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second from Member Cole. Roll call, but, in a way, just to clarify, the, because this is a no thing, so the answer would be yes if you're in favor of his motion. Okay?
Vice Mayor Robinson.
No. Oh, yes.
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 Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
No.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes. I just think based on what you've given us, it's, it's where we're at. I mean, the 5.2 acres puts it in that category. That's why I kept asking.
The second issue is now the rezoning. I, I'm going to first ask staff with regard to the rezoning, whether or not the existing land use on the property, and, and is the requested zoning consistent with the existing land use? Because you can't approve rezoning that would be inconsistent with the land use. So we'll need staff to address whether or not the rezoning is or is not requested is consistent, or the applicant, based on that, they could withdraw the rezoning, you know? But right now, the rezoning is before you.
The rezoning request, because the land use was denied, page 419 of your packet, you'll see the map, the rezoning, we would consider that to be inconsistent if the rezoning was approved. So we would recommend denial now of the rezoning.
Which, you said a map.
There, there's a.
What section of the code are you relying on to say that that use is, that rezoning is not consistent with the existing land use and why?
Sure, the comprehensive plan specifically doesn't allow high-density residential as, I'm, I'm sorry, multifamily zoning inside the conservation land use. And then the code has a land use and zoning matrix, which specifically identifies which zoning districts are consistent with which land use categories. And the R3 multifamily zoning district is not consistent underneath the conservation land use. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, ordinance of no, on the ordinance number 43203, I mean 2023, amending ordinance number 5193 of the City of Titus. I vote no on the amending of the zone map.
Go ahead, you got a second?
Is there no public hearing on this one?
Say what now?
Well, the ran, the public hearing is to both, but he has represented, so typically, and as it was presented, we did the land use, the zoning is one public hearing.
I'm fine.
If, right, if the applicant was misunderstood, that we'll do, we'll open up a public hearing on the zoning. If, if there was misunderstanding, we'll make sure you have your opportunity to address counsel on the rezoning.
So what are you saying?
The applicant wasn't aware that they were addressing the rezoning when we opened the public hearing on the land use. So he'd like to be heard on the rezoning. And again, I would allow, if he's going to present on the rezoning, then we would have to allow court on the rezoning. It was never seconded.
It was never seconded.
You can withdraw the motion at this point.
My second motion was never seconded.
Right, I would rescind the motion and do another motion after the public hearing.
Of course, of course.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I rescind my motion.
Thank you, and we will allow a public, a comment. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay, um, yeah, so, um, again, Bruce Moye with MBV Engineering in Melbourne, Florida. I, I guess I really have a question, because if the ruling on the, on the land use is that you cannot impact in, uh, wetland five acres or greater, which is, I think is what I just heard, that has to be put in conservation and cannot be impacted, I think that's what I just heard. That's contrary to what's been approved by this board before, so I think that's inconsistent, and I think that that's, um, yeah, that's not what we would expect. Um, so I really don't have any comments on the zoning because it's inconsistent now because the land used to get approved. But we've had, so anybody that has a property that has a wetland five acres or greater, I see you let them know that can no longer impact any of the wetlands in the city of Titusville. So I need to take that back to every landowner that I know in the city of Titusville and let them know that. Because that's a lot of property in the city of Titusville, a lot. And if you're not going to allow any impacts to any wetlands over five acres, that's important to us. So I need to know that that's what happened here. Um, so we're going to, we don't want, we're, we're fine with designing the zoning because the land use is what we needed, um, in, in conjunction with the zoning. But that's what I thought I heard, um, and that's very inconsistent with what has been done at this board before, so. That's all I can say.
Brad, as I asked you before, um, we consider that, you consider that and staff, five acres plus in this particular project, uh, a, a, above average, um, wetlands that would be affected. Meaning, uh, say again? Well, we're getting ready to go to that. But as I asked you before, that, that's a lot of wetlands. Five point two.
Five point two, five point four two is what the proposed impact was going to be. Is that what you were asking for?
Right.
That was the applicant's impact, proposed impact. We thought that, well, we, we struggled with it. We weren't sure that was the real magic number. We weren't convinced that the impact needed to be to that extent.
And then the other, uh, thing that stood out to me on this particular amount of wetlands was that it was rated an eight. I don't know that we've ever done a, a wetland before that was an eight. I mean, four, five, two, but an eight is a viable wetland, and it's a big wetland. It was a tough call, don't misunderstand me. I would love to say yes, but, uh, I just felt like we had some, some rules out there we had to deal with. Uh, I'm not guys, we're really, we calling any cards on this? I don't think it'd be any, say anything now. You can't, he didn't say anything.
Did you, did you say, what did you say about the rezoning?
I, I got you.
We have no comment on the zoning.
Yeah.
Mary Sparcoco. Um, I believe there's a great deal of confusion on the wetlands policy. It needs clarification, which obviously you voted to have a consultant start that process last time. Um, it is true that strategy one point six, point three, point two, uh, says that wetlands five acres and greater in size, um, shall be designated as conservation land use. Uh, it is not correct that there are no impacts allowed in conservation land use. It's just that there's no impacts for multifamily currently allowed in conservation land use. Now, single family residential uses of one unit per five acres are allowed in conservation land use, though you need to get a conditional use permit. I, I hope that the, um, whatever is broadcast all around the city provides correct information. The policies of your future land use, uh, element, starting one point sixteen, are very complex. You have not only, um, the ability to have, uh, single family, um, residences at one, one unit per five acres, such as Huntingdon Park, um, which was done very nicely by this particular engineer. Um, and they actually, um, used, um, the county's way of figuring out one unit per five acres. In Huntingdon Park, the impacts were one point eight percent of the conservation land. That is something you could consider when you update, um, your comprehensive plan, uh, future land use policies, uh, that the consultant will be working on, because that would allow you to, uh, develop, um, not only mo, a little bit of multifamily, that one point eight percent of the conservation land, but also some mixed use, um, which is, um, what the county does. They opened it up to various uses with that percentage, uh, in two thousand and nine with the West Viera DRI. Um, and, and that was done by four attorneys in the same room at the same time. Anyway, um, it is true that recently you, um, you, you, um, passed, uh, um, a, you approved a hotel that, um, had a wetland that went on to another property, actually a city's, um, property. And the applicant said that he did not have permission to survey that, um, wetland on the city's prop, uh, property. But since then, I have found a way to modify the comprehensive plan, um, to address this situation as well. And that would be to use the language in the growth management law of the state of Florida, um, that you need to use the best available data, um, to make your decision. And that probably would have forced, um, them to, um, to realize that that wetland was about five acres or greater, but you did not have that information at the time, and that's all done. So let it be. But let's be smart the way we handle these things in the future, and let's, um, be very careful and clarify our wetlands policy as best we can. And I, I, I'm totally in favor of the effort by the consultant. Thank you.
Call card, gotta give the card to her.
Oh, you do, he has a card.
Do what? No, he's still on that, we're still talking.
The other one.
Yeah. And just give to, give to the police officer. Yeah, however you want to do it, just talk.
Should we call the next person?
Uh, yeah.
Um, Stan Johnston.
Stan, come on up.
Well, I, this is quasi, so I, I would really like to take all those, we understood they're waiting to be anyone else speaking, but is, or do you saw people four before we go to the against?
This is the zoning thing.
I want to make sure that all those four have spoken before we take those against. I don't know what your.
Oh, he was four.
Four, but. Okay, I'm just making sure.
He was four. Go ahead, Stan, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, this time I'm going to be four, and, uh, I, I want to say is that, first of all, we had Kay speak, and I, I, I want to comment on this is that I don't think that was unfair. It was unfair because what you did is you went well beyond the three minutes speaking time. No, no, this is quasi judicial, isn't it? Is this quasi judicial? Okay, you went well beyond the three minutes. Just let her speak and pick and speak. You don't do that with me.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that's unfair. I'm letting you know right now is this quasi judicial fear, hearing, as far as I'm concerned, is unfair. You're supposed to be fair. You weren't. You weren't. Shame on you.
She was giving us information we didn't have.
Shame on you, you went ahead and gave her time, you didn't speak, but, but when I speak, you cut me off.
I don't cut you off.
No, that's not fair. So first of all, so as far as I'm concerned, is you, this has been prejudicial. No, I'm really, I'm serious. And so, and so the thing is, is that, is that, uh, I would like also a correction. Correction by Mr. Mr. Parish is that it says forty-three dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it says five dash nineteen ninety-three. I don't think that's correct. I think it's supposed to be fifty dash nineteen ninety-three. So I'm asking him to, to check that. Okay, can I do that?
I guess you just did.
Okay, I just did, I just did. I think we should get an answer because I've asked that question many times, and yet there's no response. Uh, I, I think that this, uh, this, this, I've, I've listened to Mr. Moya speak and so forth, and I think he's got a good idea. I think he's doing the right thing, and I believe that, that it sounds like he's saying this comp plan policy one point six, point three, point two has been, has been misinterpreted. And, uh, um, I, I think it, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a good idea to, to develop it because what you're going to come up with next time, I believe, when it comes up, it'll be far worse than this.
I'd like to ask that question too, so, I will.
Far worse.
When you're done, I'll ask it.
What, is it three minutes left?
No, no, I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm going to follow up on what you just said.
Okay, because I think, I think what the, the trend is, is you're going to find out it's going to be much more intense and so forth like that, and more, much more on, harder on, on the wetlands the next time it comes up. Okay?
All right, thank you.
So, thank you.
So Brad, um, on some of the information, just perhaps, you know, I, I'm not the expert to say that's valid or invalid, you are, um, as, is there a different, what she said? Is there a different rule? I mean, i, i, can it be used? Did you hear anything different up there than, I mean, the five point, whatever it was, two point, five acres, um, can't be done like that, or, and she seemed to think that they're by rule, by law, that, uh, depending on what you put out there?
So the question is, is she correct?
Yeah, there you go, that would, that would clear it up.
Okay, um, I mean, Ms. Spar and I have talked numerous times about how the five acre rule should be applied. Um, we've also discussed the way the county does this. And I believe she understands, she expressed to me some history apparently about this five acre rule. I'm sure she'd be able to explain more, um, in related to Titusville. I just know that the, the way we've applied it with each case, and each case is a little different, there's a little uniqueness with each property, um, that this five acre rule has either been applied specifically or in conjunction with other policies and an interpretation or determination was made at that time for that particular case. That's all I was trying to get at with you with this staff report and my analysis and description here, is that it wasn't to us as straightforward as the five acre rule. Now, that's what you've determined, that's your, you make that decision. Uh, we thought that there might be some room, but we certainly understand why you would rely on that particular strategy to make your decision as well. We thought initially, as I described to you, we thought that, um, basically the first question is can they adjust their conservation boundaries of the wetland delineation? And then once that question is answered, the next one is what's left? What do they have buildable that they can build on? Can they build something on it that's reasonable? Does it necessarily have to be two hundred and forty residential units? You can put maybe half that, I don't know what is appropriate within there to allow them to have reasonable use of the land, maybe a few units. Our next question, as you need to decide, is, is that not appropriate, is not reasonable, should they be allowed to impact the wetland and then encroach into the conservation land use some more in order to have a bigger area to build on that is more reasonable? The, we, we, uh, staff believed that the first question was answered. The second one, we didn't really know, the applicant didn't really determine whether there, that area was reasonable. They have told us it's not because they say that two hundred and forty-five residential units is the magic number. The third question we struggled with, we couldn't say for sure, we weren't convinced that encroaching into this wetland and changing as much as the conservation land use boundary as they suggested was necessary. I, so, you have already made a decision though. I laid out what I thought you needed to consider as far as your questions, but you've made your decision on the land use question. So the next question now is just the zoning.
I think we're on the zoning part of it now, is it not correct?
No, your microphone.
We're on the zoning part of it right now, but.
Correct, we're on the zoning, you made a land use decision, unless there's a motion to reconsider the land use, then that one is concluded, and now you're going to approach the rezoning.
Well, Member Nelson, go ahead.
Well, Chris, uh, Vice Mayor rescinded his motion, so don't we need to go back to that original motion?
Right, I'm going to have to re-schedule it all over again.
You made a motion before, I won't say premature, but we're doing the public hearing, so he withdrew that motion.
Right.
We have the public hearing, so there is no motion currently existing as to the zoning. You have made a decision on the land use.
Okay.
And you voted on the land use, so that, now you're on the zoning, unless there is some procedural motion to reconsider the land use, then that could be back before you. But that's been voted on, now you are having the hearing on the zoning, and there will be a motion as to the zoning ordinance at the conclusion of this testimony.
Okay, and so I want to ask Brad, is, was there anything that I just heard that changes my concern about the comp plan ability to, uh, develop, uh, or, or, or deal with the five point two wetlands?
It sounds like you're asking my opinion of whether your decision was correct?
Uh, yeah, I guess. Um, again, based on, I felt like we had a little new information in there that there might have given some gray area that I didn't think was there.
Well, I, I laid that out. I mean, I laid that out in my analysis that I, you know, staff struggled with this, we didn't see it as straightforward as that. But you, you as the judge here, basically, you've made your decision, I mean, you've made your motion on this, so if you're asking me as to whether you have the ability to reconsider this, that motion, I, that's, that's something that Richard would be better to answer.
You, at this meeting or at the meeting immediately following, you have a right to do a motion to reconsider an item or to rescind the vote. And then the item would be back before, like, you're going to see that later tonight where you're going to be asked to rescind a previous vote and then have another public hearing. So procedurally, the land use has been voted on, you move to the zoning. At any time tonight or the very next meeting, a member who voted in the majority can raise a motion to reconsider the item. So you could do that tonight and then reconsider table, get more evidence, you, that's one motion you can do. Or you can go on to your zoning now, and then someone, if they wanted to, could make a motion to reconsider at your very next meeting. That's Robert Schules, or a motion to rescind could be made.
May, may I ask permission to respond to the previous speakers as the applicant?
Attorney, we're, we're getting way beyond my normal, um, applicant. He wants to respond to a previous speaker, and I can have him continue?
Sure, you're entitled to rebuttal. If, if we've called all the cards, then this, he certainly can respond to all the speakers as rebuttal.
We still have two cards.
Okay, we still have cards.
Ron Lieberman?
As was mentioned, we've owned that property for about thirty years. And it was also mentioned, why haven't we done anything within the past thirty years? Well, being on the board of the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, I found out, or through this last legislative session, we have one point five billion dollars to spend toward affordable housing for, in one program, uh, for the next ten years. That's a hundred and fifty million dollars a year for ten years, plus an additional seven hundred and eleven million dollars for all the other programs. So I figured, you know what? And that's when I talked to our engineer, and I said, I've owned this property for a long time, okay? And Titusville really needs an affordable housing project. It hasn't had a good one in many years, which I've checked out. So I figured, you know, find a way that we can make this all work, okay? And that's when he came up with this way to make it work. Um, I think you're making a mistake, uh, you need the affordable housing, and that's what I do. I mean, we, in Florida housing, we approve billions of dollars where, every year in affordable housing projects. You need one here, it's much better than putting where we proposed to put that project than in an industrial area. So I just wanted to let you know that there's a fortune or a lot of money available. It's hard to get. It's hard to get, but we know the way to get it, okay? And that's the only reason we decided to do this property after thirty years, because the money is there.
Good answer. All right, um, at this point, we'll move forward.
I have one more card.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Tony Shifalo?
Shifalo, Tropic Street. With all respect, sir, you've owned the property, he's owned the property for, I was speaking to you, I'm sorry. He's owned the property for thirty years, he should know what the zoning is. And I think coming before, uh, to ask for a change to the comprehensive plan, which is the dream book, the wish book, the plan for our town, that has been, I assume, given careful consideration, since I wasn't here when the last plan was updated, um, I wasn't here yet. So he should've known after thirty years that the zoning is as it is, and if someone has a love of Titusville, they should want to do what's the best for the town, not just economically, but ecologically, and for the citizens also, for the people who live here and who have put a lot of effort into being here. And if there's a lot of money now for affordable housing, then couldn't a smaller project that fits the current zoning of the land still be done and still be profitable to some extent, perhaps not the extent that two hundred and sixty-five units would be? But, you know, I've been following this, and I hadn't seen too much about affordable housing. Tonight's kind of the first time I'm hearing that about it. So I would not let that sway your opinion about preserving wetlands and willy-nilly changing the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Any other cards? All right, uh, go forward with your one you held up on.
I'd like to read back.
Sorry?
I know it's canceling, my brain's getting soft too, a little bit.
Oh, it keeps coming back.
Yeah, well, for one, we're not proposing a change of the comprehensive plan. Um, and, and I'm on the planning zoning board for the Pippa County, and Mary Sparrow comes there all the time, and she's not always right. A matter of fact, we proved her wrong many times. The, 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 the comp plan we were given that we based our decision on was very clear. Didn't say multifamily or res- or single family, didn't say any of that. It said that there's this five acre issue of what you can or can't impact. So previously, regardless of what Mary said about Huntington Park, that council made the leap. They said, that five acres, we have five acres to either put in, or less, that we can either put in conservation or not. I thought it was very clear. So if you can choose to not put four point nine nine acres not into conservation, you have that ability, and that's what the council did. They took that, 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 what they thought they were entitled to do, because it says five acres or greater. Well, if we don't put this four point nine nine, that's why we said the four point nine nine, if we don't put that in conservation, then therefore, we can make it work. So that's the leap they took. Those, that, not, and that didn't get portrayed here, but, but I, I think you have that ability, and, and I think that Mary's wrong, again. So I think that it, it is reasonable. It is completely unreasonable to develop a property on six separate pieces of property on the same property. That is completely unreasonable. You know, the fact that you have zonings on the north side that are in wetlands, we're trying to fix that. And land use in concert, that is not in conservation, we're trying to put that into conservation and use the minimum amount of property that we need, and we'll even reduce it down to four point nine nine, so you can take that five acres, less than five acres, and not put it into conservation. I think you have that ability, and that's what the other council did. So I think inconsistency, I did, I do agree with Stan, which I think he's, well, he's batting a thousand tonight, um, that he got it right this time. Uh, we think it's unfair, so, uh, I think you have that ability, a- and I would hope that you would reconsider.
Have a good night, Stan.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I do have a question. Is this affordable housing you're building?
Possibly.
Okay.
Can't guarantee it for possible.
We're hoping. Okay, this is the first time we're hearing this, okay?
It, it actually did come up at the P and Z, and I believe at the first reading that there was a possibility because of his position on the board. I mean, there's no guarantees, but that would be, that would be highly possible.
Member Nelson?
So.
I wouldn't change my vote, but because of the.
No, not because of that. I would, I cannot do a motion to rescind. But I'm looking at it going, at least if we allow him that, if we take out, give him the three point five acres, like staff suggested, he has the ability to use that piece of property and make it one area that they're working on. Other than that, I would not wanna impact the wetlands. But I also sort of feel like he needs to be able to use the property. That being said, I can't do that.
Are we ready for my move? We ready for the motion? Go ahead.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor? I'll make the motion of no change to ordinance number, uh, forty-three, two zero two three, amending ordinance number five, one nine nine three of the City of Titusville. Zoning map. You want me to finish, I can finish reading that.
Oh, you're done?
I made a part that says that the owners might, I'm just saying no to the request of amending the, uh, zoning map.
I got the motion from Vice Mayor.
Second. Do you have a motion or deny? What's the basis? Is it staff's presentation about inconsistency with the land use?
Based on the inconsistency as.
The way staff sees it, if there is, um, I think you see, if, if this was approved as the rezoning was requested, then it would be inconsistent with flu policy one point fourteen point six. That talks about density of the high-density residential.
Right.
And allowing concept, you know, allowing, it's incompatible to have multifamily with a conservation land use, cuz that only allows one per five acres. And then the other thing too is the section twenty-seven dash twenty-one of this city's land development regulations, uh, identifies which zoning districts are consistent with which land use categories. So I believe that the rezoning as requested would be inconsistent with that matrix.
Okay. Got the motion. Second, roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passes. That was tough. I won't, this seems, never mind. Senator Mayor?
Yes, sir, we are now, uh, there's no ordinance as first readings, on to old business. This is, uh, item number eleven A, which is a consideration of a motion to rescind the denial of SSA five dash twenty twenty-two. The applicant Kimberly Ruzenka, on behalf of her client and property owner Gregory J. Nelson, have requested a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, SSA number five, twenty twenty-two, with rezone of approximately three point three-one acres of land located southeast of I ninety-five and State Road four oh five Garden Street interchange. On twenty-eight March two thousand twenty-three, City Council conducted a public hearing to consider this request to change the city's comprehensive fut- plan, future land designation from conservation to commercial, high intensity, and to rezone same portion of the property from open space and recreation zoning designation to regional, uh, commercial RC. City Council voted to deny the land use change, ordinance number seventeen twenty twenty-three, which effectively prevented the council from approving the rezone request, ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-two as a matter of law. On twenty-sixth September two thousand twenty-three, City Council approved the conditional mediated settlement agreement pursuant to the agreement. City Council will reconsider a motion to rescind its denial of SSA number five dash twenty twenty-two and the related, uh, rezoning request, ordinance number seventeen twenty twenty-two and eighteen twenty twenty-two. If the motion to rescind, including both denials, is approved, both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning applications will be noticed and scheduled for a second reading and public hearing at, uh, fourteen November two thousand twenty-three City Council meeting. The agreement allows for the petitioner to present his application at the second hearing before the City Council, along with supplemental information and a bubble plan for the project site. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions you have on this, uh, reconsideration.
Unless anything changed, there's not a lot to discuss. Been here, done that, now we just need to move the vote into, I don't know if that's the word or not, might be, but, um, what with nobody up here, I guess what we'll do is call the cards.
Robin Haddaway?
Good evening, I'm Robin Haddaway from Lacey Lines, Ruzenka. I'm here in place of Kim Ruzenka, who had a family emergency. Um, we are representing the applicant Greg Nelson. As you, I hope, remember, on September twenty-sixth, you voted unanimously to approve a mediated settlement agreement between our client and the city. The next step of that is, we are requesting a motion to rescind and reset for second hearing the, um, previous denial of March twenty-eighth. And our engineer is here to assist. Some of the initial concerns were with regard to drainage, and, um, I believe all those questions have been answered at this time to the satisfaction of all parties. So, subject to that agreement, we would request that motion to rescind.
Thank you. And you're right, I think we heard all that. I think we're good. You guys have sat here for four hours. Call the cards?
Um, Rodney Honeycutt is here to answer any questions.
I think we already got that last week, we're good.
And then Stan Johnston is the last card.
Yeah. It's not good when it brings the signs. It ain't good, I mean, mostly. I can't ever say always, you know, straight up.
Uh, Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, that avenue. And I'm approaching you because I've got some serious questions that, that apparently you haven't read your mail, and that is the mail that I sent you today, that very much affects what you're doing here. Because you understand that I'm suing you. I'm suing you for, if you read your la- you should've read the mail. It says, "My illegal forced removal from City Hall and Mayor's certificate of conflicts of interest, violation of constitutional rights, sunshine law, and request for apologies and resist repentance." So I want you to understand, is I'm, I'm in the process of suing you for violation of the sunshine law. You removed me illegally, and then what did I do, that violation of the sunshine law? What does it do? What does it do? Come on, what does it do? It, in other words, when I was walk, when I was being forced out of here, what happened? I said the meeting's over.
Stan, Stan, stop, stop the clock. I'm not gonna go into that right now because we're talking.
Yes, you are.
We're talking about a, then this is how you end up not being here. I haven't heard you say a word about this item, so feel free, you've done pretty well all night.
I am, I didn't say something about it. I've said I'm void, I'm vo- it's voiding this. In other words, I'm, this, the. I don't know what the point of order, why don't you let me talk?
If you'll talk on topic, that's all we ever ask you to do, Stan.
I even sent you an email about it.
Just be on topic, you'll be fine.
Okay, this email is talking about what's going on right here. In other words, on September twenty-sixth, is that I'm, I'm suing you, that, that, that when this went up to, up for order, I wasn't here. This wasn't, this meeting of September twenty-sixth was out of the sunshine. You should know that, he knows that. That's what I'm suing for. Last time I sued you for, last time I sued the city for, for being out of the sunshine, what happened? You paid my attorney costs, you paid the court costs, it was all your cost. You didn't know what you were doing.
Stop the clock. I'm gonna give you one more chance to talk about this. You've just totally left the, the building here.
Okay, maybe, all right, then.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm on topic.
Calm down a little bit and talk about this particular situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I sent you an email.
I'm not talking about email, we're talking about these guys over here.
It's about this right here, it's about this.
Well, talk, read, read it, talk about it.
Okay, I'll read it to you, I'll read it to you. It says, right here, it says, "Mayor Diesel should have recused himself for his numerous conflicts of interest, including the seventy thousand fraud of two thousand and nineteen, rather than to remove me in violation of my constitutional rights, the sunshine law, and in spite of his conflicts of interest. He owes me."
Stop the clock.
"Big, big apology."
Stop the clock.
That's about this.
No, this isn't.
Yes, it is.
And you're, you're gonna get ready to sit down here.
Doesn't he understand what, what I'm talking about?
You got about five seconds to talk something about this property.
Then you just remove me again.
No, when I say sit down, the chairs are inside. When you leave, it's cuz you didn't sit down. So if I say sit down, that doesn't say leave, I said sit down.
No, they removed me.
No, you didn't sit down.
I didn't sit down, they removed me.
That's how it works. If you don't sit down, what are you gonna do, just stand there and stop the meeting?
No, because you should've let me continue to talk.
You're gonna got about five seconds to say something about this, or you're gonna be asked to sit down.
Okay. All right, here's what I wrote, it says, "All these, as for Attorney Broom and others, shame on you for watching this circus and saying nothing about the obvious violation of law."
Stan, have a seat. You haven't talked about this, and I'll have a seat.
No, sir, I'm not staying.
Have a seat.
No. Okay, or I'm gonna be, I'm not having a seat.
Let me say again, when I say have a seat, the seats are in the room. You just wanna leave. So here we go. Wow, that was fun. Any other cards? Just talk about the topic, and we can do this fine. All right. Kinda forget where we're at here. Um, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to consider, motion of to rescind the denial of SSA five dash two zero two nine and, uh, related rezoning request of ordinance number one seven dash two zero two two and one eight dash two zero two two pursuant of the approval of mediation settlement agreement in the matter of Gregory J. Nelson, petitioner VA versus the City of Titusville, Florida, responded regarding small kill, a small-scale amendment, SSA number five dash two zero two two.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and just for our understanding, remind us what happens next on this issue.
We'll advertise, and there'll be a public hearing on fourteen November.
Okay, that'll do it. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all sitting there for five and a half hours. It is that. All right, Senator Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir, petitions and requests?
I got two of them out there, I thought, no, I can't remember. No, no?
And, uh, Mayor, Mayor Council reports?
I'll try to bring in a little bit of good news, I think everybody would agree with me, I think most everybody was there. The only thing I'm gonna talk about is that, um, um, oh geez, the stay up late to turn on the lights, the, uh, night out, night out, national night out. Now, excuse me. National night out, um, that was one of the best things we've done. That was really, really cool, and I think that hopefully that will give some ideas about having, uh, um, moving, you know, having more street parties or whatever you wanna call it there, parties. I, I thought that, uh, that was as good a time, uh, one of those events as I've, I've had. I thought it was a great gathering of the people of Titusville and, and the, uh, police officers and the fire department and, uh, city employees and the rest of the city. I thought it was great. My grandkids loved it. Go ahead.
So, question, how was that funded?
Uh, we do have a grant for that.
Okay.
Man.
It's a national program.
I mean, I agree with the mayor, that was fun.
That was so fun.
I saw somebody dancing.
We did, uh, just, uh, reference, uh, the free hamburger giveaway, it was over a hundred hamburgers and the hot dogs, we did about twelve hundred hot dogs.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Is it always on the first Tuesday of the month?
So actually, it's, the actual national night out is in August nationwide. Because in Florida, August is a little bit uncomfortable, we have chosen to move it into October.
Yeah, because they were having one in Cocoa as well, but I was in a meeting and, you know, I couldn't get my free hamburger and hot dog.
I will say that, I won't, I'm trying to make sure I don't get anybody in trouble here. Another county-level elected official came to me and said, you know, don't tell anybody I said this, so I didn't. He said, I just came from Cocoa's, he says, and this one is a whole lot more fun.
Yes.
So, so I'll leave it, leave it at that. So that's really all I was going to say. I had a wonderful time and it was just so good to see all the people come together and I loved it. So I think you got, I know you guys were there. Member Nelson?
Nothing, other than, yeah, I had a great time.
It was fun.
It was fun. I got to see you dancing.
Yeah, that was fun too.
Yeah.
That was fun.
Mayor was dancing.
Not long, but.
Not long.
It was hot.
But, yeah.
It wasn't August hot, that's a good move.
I would love to see us do that in the spring.
I'd like to see it about four times a year, something like that.
Yeah. So.
Great setting, great setting. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to discuss a letter that was passed out from Attorney Severs to the members of the council. I want to set the record straight that he spoke, alluded to a lobbyist and myself being in business together, and we are not, and alluded to financial gains. And I, I really was put back by the letter that was sent out. I just want to set the record straight that I am not in partnership with the lobbyist that he alluded to in the letter that he sent. And I would ask him, if he is watching, to please check the records before he sends out something that's disparaging against someone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, mine is not that solemn, all I did, I was an emcee at Bob Lambert, he had been at the housing.
You're always an emcee. You must be good.
At the, at the housing authorities and, you know, I did the best job to represent the City of Titusville that I could. Last night, I was expecting the mayor, but he did not come with the League of Cities down in Melbourne. And, you know, it is some advantages to not have all of those downtown shops and you can, don't have no place to park, so.
Yeah.
You know, we better watch what we wish for, so, but otherwise, I had a good time. I had to park a long way from the hotel and then walk, but.
Good exercise.
It's good exercise, but I had a good time, good meeting, and that's my update.
Member Stokoe? Oh my, Member Stokoe, she's at a committee meeting.
She was visiting action.
Oh, okay, all right, you were it then. Senator Mayor?
I have one action item, and council had requested that staff take a look at public broadcasting of the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings. So we did some research and, on my report, and we've come up with three possible courses of action for council to consider. The first is, do not broadcast the TEC meetings, maintain the status quo. Option two is alternate broadcasting of the T E C and the B A A meetings. That would be five meetings for each of those committees. And course of action three would be to broadcast all T E C meetings and discontinue televising the B A A meetings. So this is zero cost, all we're doing is shifting staff time as you desire.
So there's something you need us to decide right now?
Yes, sir.
I'll take discussion on that, I have some thoughts, but go ahead, Member Nelson.
I'd suggest splitting it. Half B A A and half T E C.
Yeah, I don't know that you can argue with that, although I must admit, I've never had anybody ask me, can you get B A A on there? And, yeah, I, I think if we start that way and see how it goes, I think, Senator Mayor mentioned that, then we could, if it turns out that, you know, we can see the numbers, right?
Yes, well, there's a little bit of a misnomer on YouTube, so if you click on it, you're going to be counted as a number. We don't know how long you've actually participated and watched.
Yeah, and quite honestly, let's face it, you can click your, click your button in. So I did, like I said, my thought would be to go five and five and then see if T E C needs to have more, because I, I think if there's, of the two, I think T E C would be the one that would get more views than, I mean, I can't imagine, I'm sitting there watching the B A A, but, go ahead.
Only thing that I would be concerned of, Mr. Mayor, is the speaking time and, you know, but we'll have control if it doesn't flow well.
Well, I think all those things, like, yeah, I agree, I think, but.
That's the only thing, but I think fifty-fifty is the way that we should go.
I, I can't argue that.
Maybe look at it for six months and.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, certain time, but six months and, or a year even, whatever y'all decide, and then say, okay, we need to shift more over here, or more over here, or hey, this is good, half and half.
I think they refer to that as an audible in football terms, maybe?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
In football terms, isn't that called an audible?
That'd be an audible, or.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we go with option two, which is splitting the video recording or the YouTube video of the Code Enforcement Board and the T E C.
That'd be the B A A.
B A E E.
Yes, sir.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, we split it.
And last, just information, it's already time for the board and commission recognition ceremony, which is currently scheduled for twenty-sixth October at six PM at Indian River Preserve. Concludes my portion, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I don't. Senator Attorney? Brad, anything you want to add? It's been a neat night. All right, go home and have a Coke. Meeting adjourned, thank you, guys.